The county, they had beautifully restored this building, and it stayed closed most of the time to the community. Eventually, I got the call.
I would like to call to order the June 5, 2023, Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. First up on our agenda is the approval of the work session agenda. Commissioners, you all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page three?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We would like to welcome the Boy Scout troop from First Presbyterian Church in Concord that's with us here tonight. If you guys would stand and be recognized, they're working on their communications merit badge. So, welcome. It's good to have all of you here. First up on our agenda is two public hearings. The first is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2024 budget. So, at this time, I would open the public hearing. I do have some yellow cards from folks that have signed up to speak, and the first one of those is Jasmine Luder.
Hello. Good evening, county commissioners. My name is Jasmine Luder, and I am here to talk to you again today about rental assistance. First, I would like to thank Commissioner Kenny Wortman for coming to me and telling me about the emergency assistance program that currently exists. I do believe that you brought this information to me in good faith and that you really did see us the last time that we were here. However, I am not sure that you heard us. After doing research into the current emergency assistance program, we have discovered that it is underutilized because it is insufficient. There are many stipulations around it that can easily disqualify you as an applicant. It is impossible to find online. All searches take you to pages about emergency rental assistance. There is no online application, and it can only be accessed in person or through the mail. The program can be used for any situation, not just for rent. Therefore, it is not what we asked for. We are asking for a program that specifically provides assistance for rent. When ERAP existed, it was used by 2,158 families, and since its closing, there has been a spike in evictions. Did you know that Cabarrus County is ranked number six out of 100 for evictions among renter households? This is a very real issue that directly affects many Cabarrus residents, people whom I've spoken with and heard them say how much this rental assistance program would mean to them. These are the people you represent, so it should matter just as much to you. Lastly, I want to thank Chairman Steve Morris and County Manager Mike Downs for taking the time to speak with me about this. While I understand that the federal funding for ERAP has ended, the emergency has not. I urge you, county commissioners, to find a way to fund this program. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is May Mack.
Hello, commissioners, and others here or watching. My name is May, and I am a citizen of Cabarrus County. I'm here to, I am here to talk to you today about the need to allocate funding in our county budget to address the housing crisis. For the upcoming budget for FY '24, I am pleading with you to ensure that there is funding available to families to prevent evictions and therefore reduce homelessness. I want to point out that empirical research conducted in 2019 found evictions significantly increases families' likelihood of homelessness in the future. This is due to the fact that an eviction filing only can automatically disqualify you for rental properties and that this is even more likely when applying to a corporate or large landlord, as is frequently the case in the current rental market. There are a few factors I want to bring your attention to in order to help you understand the pressing nature of this issue. First, although the crisis funds available to our community were in the millions of dollars for the last three years, this upcoming year, the federal and state dollars that were there due to COVID have dried up, leaving Cabarrus County residents painfully exposed to the harshness of life's uncertainties. There is little to no support available or seemingly consideration for this issue of what this means for those going into a housing or utility crisis over this next year. Second, I want to address the current emergency relief program that is funded by the county and that currently sits at right over $70,000. This fund has been underutilized due to the additional funds that were available due to COVID funds. After speaking to multiple members of the crisis team at DSS, I learned about the multiple reasons that this fund is woefully ill-suited to address evictions in Cabarrus County. First, individuals have to be undergoing eviction before they are eligible, and approval can take up to 60 days. This timeframe does little to prevent evictions. Landlords must be registered vendors in Cabarrus County, and this process takes over an hour to sign up and register. Landlords in Cabarrus County are unlikely to undergo this strenuous process. This is recognized by members of the DSS crisis team as a barrier for residents using it for rental assistance. In the previously funded ERAP program, DSS partnered with Cooperative Christian Ministries to work around this issue. This is only one way that ERAP is better suited to deal with the rental assistance crisis. Only five hundred, third reason, only $500 are available to a family per fiscal year, which is recognized as inadequate for the current market and is less than many of the surrounding counties, also acknowledged by the DSS crisis team. Lastly, the DSS crisis team is experiencing record numbers of applications and recognizes the need for additional funding to meet the demand. There is the request to not lose the funding that is currently appropriated from this previous year and to allocate another $85,000 to the account rather than lose it since they didn't use it. Evictions are an issue here in Cabarrus County, and this is supported by Cabarrus County ranking as number six in the state for highest number of evictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Luder.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Food, clothing, and shelter. So, I here, I too am here for evict less, house more. My reasons are very simple. We do know there is a surplus that is available that can be added to increase emergency funds for people who are experiencing difficulty maintaining their home. We do know that if we break up a family due to eviction, we do more harm than good to that family, to the children in that household, and more specifically to our own communities. We break up houses, we break up communities, we challenge our schools to now account for that child's education in a different way. We put a burden on our social services, all of this simply by refusing to find the dollars necessary to keep people in their homes. So, I know we make assertions that if a person fails to pay their rent, that somehow they're at fault, somehow they did something wrong. That may be true. Often, it's not the case. Very often, people simply fall upon a hard time, whether that be breakdown of vehicle, they can't get to work, medical emergency, they can't pay the medical bills or the expenses necessary to keep someone in their home well and make the rent payment. We were here last time, and we shared that many of the people who are in eviction court are behind just a few dollars, not even the entire rent, maybe a few hundred dollars at most. So, there should be a capacity, we as neighbors, you as commissioners, we as residents of the Cabarrus County, to find a means to keep families in their homes. And so, I ask that, one, we waive some of these difficult measures to get people access to this service, to these emergency funds, that we increase the amount of funds that are available to these families, and that we promote the awareness of these funds that are available. I'd rather see a child stay in their home, stay with the class that they started with, than have to be broken up, and the social services have to intervene because now the family can no longer take care of the children. So, we expound the difficulties rather than try to find ways to alleviate it. And so, many of us who are of faith, we claim that we want to see certain things for our neighbors, and I think this time, this is an easy way to accomplish that. It's an easy way to make a difference, is to find a way to help people stay in their homes and avoid eviction. So, again, I say evict less, house more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Ortiz.
Good evening, commissioners and others listening. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Emergency Rental Assistance because, as I pointed out last time I spoke here, this is an ounce of prevention that's worth a pound of cure. When people get evicted, they don't just disappear. They still have to be cared for, they're still around, they're on the streets, they're in the woods, they're consuming social services at a usually higher rate than if they were in their home. What I've seen in eviction court is, as Mr. Luder pointed out, many people have jobs, have their rent, are just a little short, but the landlord won't take partial payment. So, the crisis hasn't gone away. The crisis wasn't caused by a lack of demand due to people losing their jobs or businesses closing. If that had happened, if that were the cause of the crisis, you would expect to see prices and rents go down due to a drop in demand. I'm sure all of you understand the law of supply and demand. But they have gone up, they've skyrocketed, and the reason, and that in fact is the reason for the crisis of affordability. People who could make rent before or might have had a little cushion are now on the edge, and the slightest crisis can push them over the edge and into eviction, and there's nothing there to catch them. There used to be something, and now it's gone. So, we need to put it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bertina Dixon.
Good evening to all the commissioners. I want to speak from experienced. It's hard when you lose a place to live, not by your own choice, but from hardship. You know, I worked all my life, and I became sick, disabled, lost my eyesight, and when I suffered from partial paralysis, would be walking and couldn't walk, couldn't move from my waist down. I would have to just wait for it to run its course before I could even walk again. So much pain, and they told me I had the symptoms of musculosclerosis. But then they come back years later and said it was even worse. When I started feeling a little bit better, I went back to work, and I worked on a job called personal care attendant, helping other disabled people, helping elderly people. It was a job that I loved doing, always trying to help others. But then, when they got to a point where they didn't have any clients that I could go to, I was at home. I had to call in every day for weeks for them to tell me they didn't have any clients. But the rental people, they didn't want to hear that, that I wasn't going to be able to pay my rent. When I went to the office, I lived in low-income apartments, my daughter and I, and I tried to get my rent adjusted, explain to them what happened. They did not want to hear that. So, they contacted my job, and they said, well, you're still employed with them. So, when I contacted my job to quit, they said, well, you got to write a resignation. So, I did all of that. But it's still the point that if there would have been emergency assistance for me just to keep my daughter and I in that apartment just for that one month, could have helped us so much not be separated. I had to send her to her father all the way to Alabama. She only had three more weeks to graduate from Northwest Cabarrus High School. It was the most heartbreaking thing I ever experienced, having to send my child away and not being able to see her graduate from high school because we didn't have a place to live, and I had to go take her somewhere where she could have a stable life. I had to live out of my suitcase. I came back up here with all my belongings in my suitcase, nowhere to go. So, then, some of my family members gave me a place to live, but then they treated me as if I was beneath them. I was at the lowest point. Sometimes, people don't treat you the way they should. And people don't treat homeless people the way that they should. They look down on them, they frown upon them. But this is a serious situation. That why my assistance could have helped me because I had to put in a 30-day notice so I wouldn't have an eviction and it wouldn't go against me not to be able to get a place anywhere else. So, please, help the people so they won't get evicted because people need a place to live. Times are hard. Rent is so high, people can't afford it. They got to work two and three jobs to try to keep a roof over their head, and they can't enjoy living over there, under that roof because they got to work all the time, they have families. I have been in homeless shelter, I have seen families ashamed to be in that position. I never thought I was going to be one of those people. I ride the bus almost every day with the homeless, people who live out of hotels and have to pay rent every week. If they miss one week of not paying their rent, they are evicted. They have nowhere to go. I listen to their stories, how they go out to restaurants, they get poor courtesy, the food is cold. There's nothing like being in a home, having a good home-cooked meal, and I'm sure you all know all about that. Please, consider helping others. Evict less, house more, because just one month of help will make a difference in my life and my daughter's. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Jane Williams.
Good evening, county commissioners. My name is Jane Williams, and I'd like to tell you about my story. I'm a single mom of five children, working. One day, I wake up and my daughter's sick. She's nine months old. I call the job, they're okay, they're children-friendly. I take her to the doctor, I take the day off. Two weeks later, I'm sure my rent's due, just $100 of $1,200 of rent. So, I have a choice, buy formula and food or short the rent. I'm in this house for five years, so I short the rent. I tell the landlord, I promise I'll pay the late fee and the rent that I owe. He doesn't want it, he refuses to take it. I beg and plead. No answer, blocks my number. So, 30 days later, I get a letter to go to court. I go to court, I have all the money, all the back rent, I have everything. He refused to take it. I begged the judge to beg him, the judge literally begs him. He says, no, she even made a verbal promise, she broke it, I want her out. Forty-eight hours later, I was homeless with five children. I'm sorry, in the wintertime, we had nowhere to go. We still had to go to work, we still had to go to school. I would take them to school. After school, they had a Boys and Girls Club that was free. After that, a friend would let me cook at her house, and I feed the children. Then, we'd go car camping. Back in those days, we had a little boombox with the TV in it, and we'd go car camping. The older ones knew, but the two younger ones didn't. We'd go to the truck stop, and we'd stay there. I talked to the guard, he keeps an eye on us. We sleep there at night, I stay up as much as I can, keep the car running to have gas, air, heat. Do you know what it's like to have to take your children to the shower in a truck stop? Well, we did that. We did it for two weeks. On the weekends, we had money for, a little money for a hotel because we had nowhere to go during the day, so I had to put them someplace. Eventually, we found someplace, but I had to pay not only a month's rent, but a month's rent, month and a half security. And my biggest fear was someone find out and they take my children away from me. Please, help, because if I had a program like this to help, my children wouldn't have gone through this. I know the younger ones don't remember, but the older ones do. We, we never talk about it. It's like something that we don't want to remember. But in order to get help, I will let this memory come back to life that I've suffered for since I was 29 and I'm 61, just to help, ask you to help us, to help the people. Please, and thank you for listening to my story. And I'm sorry I was crying like a child, please forgive me. Thank you all.
Thank you. That is all of the yellow cards that I have for folks that have signed up to speak on the budget. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the fiscal year 2024 budget before we close the public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing for our fiscal year 2024 Economic Development Allocation. That allocation is included in our general budget that was presented at our last meeting and has been available to the public since that time. Rules require that, I think pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, the county must conduct a separate public hearing for economic development appropriations. A funding plan is approved during the public hearing when each new economic incentive is approved, and now one is required for the county's annual appropriation for the contribution to the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation. So, at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anybody to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, seeing no one coming forward to speak on this matter, I will close the public hearing. Okay, we will move now to discussion items for action. First is item 4.1 from the Sheriff's Office, Retirement of K9 Turbo. And we welcome Officer Klingel Smith to speak on that matter.
Thank you, Chairman Morris, commissioners. Basically, the Sheriff's Office is coming before the board today to request the surplus of K9 Turbo. Just to give you a little bit of a background, Turbo is a German Shepherd. It's currently the oldest canine we have at the Sheriff's Office. It's eight years old and has been in service with the Sheriff's Office since 2016, so about seven years. Recently, the handler had noticed some odd behavior. You would think with the name Turbo that the dog would always be going, so when it wasn't, there needed to be a little bit of research to find out maybe what was going on with the canine. So, after taking the Turbo to the Cabarrus Animal Hospital and to see a specialist, they actually uncovered a heart-related issue which is called a mitral valve disease. So, it's a degenerative disease, it's progressive. Usually, I did some research on it today, usually about 10% of all dogs get some type of heart disease, and of that 10%, 80% is typically that same mitral valve disease. So, what we are looking to do again is to request a surplus, and as customary for the handler, to have that canine turned over to them, to them to care for it for the remainder of its life. I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Questions for Kevin? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to item 4.2, Provider for Regional Behavioral Health Center, and we're happy to have Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris to talk on that item.
So, while Lauren's pulling up the presentation, just some introductory remarks. Back in January, we put out a request for proposals for providers for the new behavioral health facility, and we knew going in, because this is a unique facility, that it was going to take a unique provider to be able to service what we were looking for. And so, as you recall, this is a combination of facility-based crisis care, psychiatric residential treatment, and also behavioral health urgent care. And that array of services requires someone with expertise that is widespread. And we are happy to come to you today after reviewing the six proposals and interviewing the top two candidates to be providers that we are recommending at a staff level, that we move forward with negotiating an agreement with Monarch. And we have Dr. Peggy Tahrone here, who's going to go through a brief presentation to give you a sense of what their proposal entails and then also what Monarch stands for. So, I'm going to turn it over to Peggy.
Good evening, commissioners and visitors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present information about Monarch. I don't think I can advance the slides, but you can maybe? So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about who we are. I'm going to tell you what we envision for the Cabarrus County Behavioral Health Center, talk a little about the cost model so that you understand what we're doing, and then answer any questions you might have. Next slide, please. So, Monarch is a private nonprofit. We were organized in 1958, actually in Stanley County, by parents. So, we are a group of people that are, have been driven since then. When I came to Monarch 28 years ago, we were pretty small. We were in Cabarrus and Union and Stanley, and that was pretty much it, a little bit of Montgomery. We've grown since then, now we're a statewide organization. We serve over 30,000 people every year. We have about 1,500 staff, and we're accredited by all the right people and follow all the right rules. Next slide, please. Oh, okay, thank you. So, what makes Monarch different from other companies, I would say, is our values. And I think that this is probably the most important part of the whole presentation, is who we are. We believe that everyone has a right to achieve their unique potential. We believe that it's not our job to tell you what you want your life to be. It's your job to tell us what you want your life to be, and it's our job to help you figure that out and get there. And so, our values are incredibly important to us, and I'm going to spend a little time on them because that's what makes us different. The first one is integrity. We believe in being honest, open, and ethical. So, given that this is a facility that is owned by Cabarrus County, we believe that you have access to everything we have access to. It's your tax dollars that would be providing the services in the, in the facility via Medicaid dollars and other ways that you pay your taxes to the state. And so, we believe that it's really important to be open and honest and let you see anything and everything that we see. Compassion is probably one of the most significant values. It's the reason most of our staff work for us. We don't pay a whole lot of money, we're not, you know, a rich company. We're a private nonprofit. People will inevitably tell you, why do you work for Monarch? Because I love the people we work with and because I'm treated with respect. We believe compassion is important not only for the people We believe compassion is important not only for the people we work with, but for our employees, for their families, and for the communities at large. Respect, obviously, is the next one. Excellence is the third one. We follow multiple evidence-based practices. Monarch is the company that has brought multiple new things to the state, new options for services. We are continually going out and are members of best-practice communities where we're sure that what we're doing is evidence-based, meaning research has occurred and it's been published, but also that it works. So we want to do services that work. We don't do things that are, you know, kind of on the edge or the fringe at all. We do things that we know will work. Courage is another one, and we put that one in there because we want our staff to know that it's okay to make mistakes and it's okay to risk. Because if you think about it, that's how we all learn. Every last one of us learns by making mistakes. We started when we were toddlers trying to climb on the couch, and it took us 20 times to get up there, and eventually, we learned how to do that. Well, we know that when we're working with people, mistakes happen. And so we want to make sure that everyone knows that you tell us if you make a mistake so we can teach you to do it differently or, or something like that. Courage also to risk, and this is a risk for us. It's a big project, but we think that we're up to the challenge and, and can handle this. And then the last one is innovation. So we believe in doing things differently. I guess the best way to explain this is sort of to move into my vision for the PRTF. If you don't know what that is, it's a psychiatric rehabilitation treatment facility. And in the state right now, PRTFs are under investigation by disability rights, and they're being cited as one of the worst types of care that can be given. And that's because in many of the PRTFs, what happens is kids are put into these centers with lots of other kids with problems. They're not supervised adequately, and they're not kept busy. They have school, but many of the PRTFs offer school by going online, and you sit in front of a computer and do the same things that we all had to do during the pandemic that we know set our kids back. Just because a kid gets sent to a PRTF doesn't mean the kid is bad. It doesn't mean the kid is a problem. It means the kid has mental health issues. We need to treat them like kids. We need to treat them like people of worth and value. We need to invest in them and help them grow so they can step out of the PRTF and function in our community. That's not always what happens. There have been multiple PRTFs in North Carolina that have actually been closed in the last couple of years. So what I envision is something very different. I want a place where, first of all, kids are busy most of the, of the day. So during the day, we propose hiring four teachers for the total number of kids, I believe it's 24 kids, that would have kids in small classes. We do this in another program that we have operated, and in this program, it's a school for boys with substance use disorder ages 13 to 17, small classes with teachers that understand different learning styles, understand learning disabilities. Oftentimes, kids like this that end up in PRTFs are failing in school because somehow it's never been identified that they have some sort of different learning style or different way of learning. So I want teachers that get it and teachers that will work with the kids in small classrooms so the kids can be successful. And in doing that, the teachers all work together with the therapists. So for example, in our program in Asheville, we had a kid whose dad was diagnosed as diabetic, and the kid was already depressed, and now he was worried that dad was going to die and things were going to be really, really bad. So the team got together and talked about it, and in school, in the English class, the child researched diabetes and wrote a paper about it. In the science class, the kid learned about glucose and what it does to your body and how you're supposed to have a certain kind of diet. In the history class, he learned about all of the new things that are happening, what's happened in the past and what's happened in the future. And he ended up writing a letter to his dad explaining that he understood what, what was going on with his dad, and that he loved his dad, and that he didn't think he was going to be so depressed and worry about his dad anymore. So this is therapy and school working together. I think we need a wholeness, a whole approach, rather than an isolated approach. You're in school, now you're in therapy, now you're in recreation. So we need to do some of, all of that. I could envision that kid even perhaps volunteering and helping at a local hospital with people who are diabetic. Let's put it all together and help the kid where the kid is, not where we think, oh, these are kids with mental illness, so we need to house them and just keep them out of the public eye. So we're innovative. We, we do things other people don't do, and we're very successful at it. We see your center as one big center with each of the pieces working together. So we envision our staff being able to float between the different areas, and you can see all of the different groups there. But the other way that we're different is we'd like an advisory committee. We think that because this is a Cabarrus County program, it should have people from Cabarrus County telling us, this is what we see, this is what we need. We'd love to have a representative from DSS, a representative from NAMI. Other people that, that you would like to see on that would be more than welcome. We'd love to have one of you, but I know your time is incredibly valuable. But we think that by having people in Cabarrus County that are actually on the ground, we're going to get better feedback about what needs to happen in this program and how it needs to be run. So we're very interested in, in that piece. So we're kind of unique in that way. We don't sit back and go, we're the know-it-alls. We sit back and say, how can we work together as a group to do what's right for kids at Cabarrus County? We also currently run a behavioral health urgent care in Wake County, and we do all of those things in the behavioral health urgent care. It's quite successful. The county is very pleased with our urgent care. I've talked about the PRTF. One of the things I didn't talk about is that I want certified occupational therapist assistants that can work on other pieces of mental illness, building self-esteem, helping kids have wins, doing the kinds of things that, that are building the kid up, not tearing them down. We also currently operate an adult facility-based crisis and a substance use facility-based crisis or program, as you're calling it here. Those are also very successful. I can point to customer after customer that's been there, that can tell you that we saved their life, we saved their marriage, they're now sober and doing well. We also help people find jobs. And when we do these programs, what we do that's different is we wrap it around. So you heard from people talking about homelessness. Well, if you have a mental illness or a substance use disorder, that's not the only thing that's wrong. Chances are good you're going to be homeless. Chances are good you're going to lose your job. Chances are good your family's going to leave you. So we don't want to just treat you. We want to help you with all of the surrounding things and offer you access to all the resources that Cabarrus County has to offer so that you don't end up in a bad situation. So we want to wrap all that around. I'm talking fast. This is our financial projection. All of the money would come from billing. None of the money comes from the county. We were told you've spent your money on building the building, or you will have. You won't have extra money, then we don't need to have your extra money. We need to figure out how to do this with Medicaid and state-funded money, working with partners. We do this now. We have a great relationship with partners. They've asked us to open more services in their catchment area. So we think that this would go well. And what you'll see, if you look at this, is how we do this, is the PRTF and the behavioral health urgent care are likely to make money, and the state knows that. They also know that the facility-based crisis is likely to lose money, and the substance use will lose money. But if they all even out, we're a private nonprofit, we need to break even, have enough little extra to help that cash flow, but we don't need to make money. So this is our initial take. And in your books that you've been given, there are individual projections for each of the programs that you can look at. So I hope I have explained to you why. I hope you will approve us as your staff's recommendation to manage the behavioral health urgent care. We've also worked with your architect before. He built our facility-based crisis program, and he's actually the one who called me and said, you need to apply for this because this is right for you and you'd be right for them. So do you have any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Dr. Tarhune? I, I do not have questions, but I do have some, some comments. First of all, thank you very much for your presentations. Your, your presentation hit the nail on the head as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
You know, the things that you talked about, particularly in, in the area of vision and values, I think addressed specifically what we, we hope for. I think that probably the, the development and opening of this facility is one of the most important things that we could be doing in Cabarrus County at this time. The values that you have outlined represent the values that I hope we also follow, and, and hopefully, all the people that have come and spoke to us tonight feel like they have been respected and heard. And I think that, that some of the discussions that we, we've had and heard from the public tonight has probably revealed some things to me, along with some other conversations, say, well, we need to go take a look at this. Maybe this is not working the way that it should look. And, 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 you know, I, I want you to feel welcomed and appreciated, but I want, at the same time, to say, we're going to hold you too. All these things that, that you have put in, 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 in this book, and, and I have no reason to believe that you will not follow that, but I think it is critically important that, that we offer these services to, to our citizens here in Cabarrus County. I think we hear more and more about it in the news every single day, particularly in the area of, of the behavioral health urgent care facility. And, and this has been the sermon that I've been preaching when I'm out talking to people out in the public for, for a number of years. You know, we have a lot of people in crisis situations, and, and if, and if it gets out of control and families have to call for help, the only thing that we have to offer them is we can transport them to our detention facility or to our emergency room. And, and of course, we've had many professionals to talk to us and, and explain how inappropriate either of those locations are. And so, and I think our citizens recognize that, and, and, and I think that, that when we display concern and compassion and provide alternatives, I think that we can help our, specifically our young people, but, but others as well, to be successful and productive in our community. That, that is our moral obligation to do that. And so we, we certainly, I appreciate the presentation that you've made. Look forward to, to, to getting this facility constructed and up and running. It will not be done fast enough. I have no doubt about that because it, I'd, I'd love to see it operating today. But thank, thank you very much for, for, for making the, the proposal and the, and the presentation, and, and we look forward to being able to provide this service to, to the residents of our county.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any?
I've got a couple of questions, and you may have went over this in the presentation. I apologize if I missed it, but how many clients are you proposing to, to have here in Cabarrus County?
I'm sorry, how many?
How many clients, or I guess patients?
Clients? So I believe that the PRTF is 24. I believe that the FBCs are each 10, and the BHUC would be whoever came in. We would have, I think, six chairs on each side, 16 chairs on each side? You're counting chairs, I'm counting people. So up to 32 people in the behavioral health urgent care. And, and you're right, it's critical. If you go to an emergency room and you have a mental illness, you get zero treatment until they place you. You come to us, you get treatment the minute you walk in the door.
Right. Well, certainly, and, and, you know, I agree with Chairman's comments. I mean, this is, you know, very important, and, you know, mental health, mental illness, mental health, you know, has become, you know, something that is very prevalent, and this would be much better served for, for those individuals, this facility, rather than the emergency room. And then I guess the other question I have, and I know we probably have went over this, but this question's for the manager, what's the timeline on this? I know we've discussed this facility a few times, but I can't recall what the...
Yeah, it's moved around a little bit, Rodney.
Yeah, okay.
Our, our contractor is...
Just, just a general timeline of, you know, when we're looking at it.
In terms of design and construction?
Well, I would say to grand opening, what would be like a timeline?
It depends on the site that we, we put the facility on, but 2025 is what we're...
2025, okay. So a little over a year, we'll say, year and a half or so.
Yeah, more like a, probably a year and a half. We're, we're through our DD phases right now, and we still have to work out some civil issues, and we're looking at a, a couple options of, if it wasn't at the Kannapolis location that we'd originally discussed at the milestone building.
So with the acquisition or potential acquisition of the ACN building, one of the items we're looking at is whether this facility makes more sense on the land that is available. And a big driver of that is the proximity to the hospital. It makes it a lot easier for transports. The Kannapolis Parkway location is a little more remote, and so we are actively exploring that unless there are objections from the board about considering that alternative.
I just have a question for Rodney. With the potential acquisition of the ACN building, there's three buildings on that site, is that correct?
It's basically, it's basically two. The one building on the, the front edge is connected.
Okay. The one, if I'm looking at the building towards, up towards the right there, would that, would this facility fit into that?
No.
Okay, that's, I was just thinking, cost savings.
Yeah, because of the, the requirements for this type of facility, in terms of the construction of it, it'll have to be a fresh building.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
That, okay, that leads me into a question then. So this state grant that we received for this building, you just said that it would have to be a fresh building, you said?
It's for new construction.
New construction, okay. So that would be on the ACN property?
That is an option on the table, correct.
Two. One is to build out near the milestone, and the other is the ACN.
Okay. I mean, this is first I'm hearing of this, so that's why.
Yeah.
Just curious. And so how much room is in that ACN campus to put?
There's about five acres of undeveloped land. And, and one of the issues at the Kannapolis Parkway, if you've been over there, is there's a significant topography change.
Right.
That's going to require us moving a lot of dirt and putting in retaining walls that we don't have to do on the land at the ACN building. Now, the flip side of that is the ACN building is going to require some stormwater investments, so we have to balance those two.
Okay. And so again, that, that state grant requires new construction. Can't be remodeled.
It's for the construction of a facility, correct.
Okay.
And then the other thing with that building at ACN is we actually think probably at opening or pretty soon thereafter that Human Services can fill the main building and the out parcel.
We'll be, we'll be coming with you with a report, the pros and cons and the cost differentials of moving there back.
And that'll probably be at the regular meeting in two weeks because it is time-sensitive because of where we are in the design process. They've been designing to Kannapolis Parkway. If they're having to shift to a new site, we're going to need to make that decision soon.
I think, having visited several of these facilities, it is obvious why it would need to be a specially constructed facility. Some of the security measures that are built in and a number of different factors would probably make it prohibitively expensive to try to adapt an existing structure, at least that was my interpretation.
There are significant issues. For example, the building that we built, that, that your architect built for us in Charlotte is ligature-free. We know that kids, we know that suicide is the leading cause of death for teenagers right now, which is horrendous. We want to make sure there's no ligature points, that a kid could hurt themselves. That can get expensive. The other thing that we've talked about are outlets. Kids can try to put something into an outlet and hurt themselves, you know? But the outlets, for example, that we have in that building are three-pronged outlets, and they don't connect unless all three prongs connect at exactly the same time. Everything in that building is curved. The ceilings are high, so kids can't go through the ceiling or play with, you know, the ceilings that have the panels on them. There, there's all kinds... There's all kinds of things to construction that are really critical to pay attention to for safety. And then, of course, the PRTF will be a locked facility. So there needs to be courtyards and outdoor areas that people can get to where you don't have somebody that's going to throw drugs over the fence. Lots of issues.
Yeah, I think also the earlier question about the number of people accommodated in the various, just for the benefit of the public, for example, on that B-Huck, those seats turn over rapidly.
Yep.
So if it's, and 32, I think, was the number-
Right.
Then that 32 in the matter of a month could become a much, much larger number because that's not a long-term situation.
Right.
That is, hopefully, and I say part of this, so give you an opportunity to correct me if I'm wrong, but in a lot of those situations, the ultimate goal is to, if someone's in a crisis situation, is to not solve that problem, but to get them out of crisis and to get them stabilized and back into a therapeutic condition or situation where they can get more in-depth help. Is that correct interpretation?
That's exactly correct. And the B-Huck beds, per state regulation, would be 23 hours.
Right.
So someone could come in and spend 23 hours with us for evaluation, and then if they needed more, we could move them to the facility-based crisis or the PRTF.
Right, so those B-Huck beds could theoretically be 30 times 32. So there could be-
I hope it's not that high.
I hope it's not either. I hope it's not either. But to be able to have that available for our citizens when that need arises, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be important for us, this Board of Commissioners and others, to work hard to educate the community once this is out there, to make sure that they know that this is available, that they know that this is, that there's no stigma attached to it. We're doing this because people need help and can get back to happy and productive lives.
Absolutely, thank you. You're correct. You will also, by the way, add jobs. I don't know if you've thought about that. Will that jobs?
Yes, jobs, exactly. Right. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman, and that is, we didn't mention this, but a lot of times we have people that get incarcerated, and they don't have nowhere to go. I mean, they, just like Chairman said, they go to the hospital, and then a lot of times the hospital would refer them on somewhere else. It could be two, three-hour drive away because we haven't had this type facility around. But now that we're going to have this, a lot of times the people that are on that side of the street don't really need to be there. That's not going to solve their problem. They need evaluation and they need treatment, and that's what this is going to help us with.
People with mental illness frequently run into trouble with the criminal justice system, and it's unfortunate because oftentimes it's because their mental illness is untreated. If we can treat it and get it to it more quickly, then we can prevent that.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move now to item 4.3, and that is appointments to boards and committees. All of you have a copy of the various positions that are to be appointed or reappointed. I think you received those by email earlier, as well as the agenda tonight. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding any of these appointments? Okay, hearing none, we will move to item 4.4, and that is NACO Voting Credentials. The National Association of Counties will hold their 2023 Annual Conference in Travis County, Texas, on July 21st through 24th, 2023. In order to participate in the Association's annual election of officers, a voting delegate must be registered by July 17th at 5:00 PM. So we would, and I know that I have signed up to attend that NACO conference. Has anyone else? So in that regard, if I'm the only one that's going to be there, I would ask that you appoint me as that voting delegate.
Motion to-
Yeah, and of course, I don't think we've got this down to suspend the rules, so this would go on our consent agenda. Yeah, if everybody is, if we have consensus on that, and I think we do, great. So we will, we will move on to item 4.5. That is Resolution Amending the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners 2023 Meeting Schedule. And the resolution changes the date for the July work session from July 3rd to July 10th. And I think that Monday, July 3rd, is one day before July the 4th. A lot of people on vacation that week, so that would move it a week forward. Any comments, questions on that?
No problem with that.
Okay, all right, then we will move to item 4.6. This is an easement for the Back Creek Greenway, and we're happy to have Kelly Sifford to talk about that.
Thank you. Cabarrus County Schools has approached us regarding this easement. The proposal is for the town of Harrisburg to hold the easement on Back Creek. This easement will cross the back of Hickory Ridge Middle and Hickory Ridge High Schools. We still own these properties, so that's the reason that it needs to come to us. The school board has approved this agreement, and it will allow for the Greenway to be constructed, and so we would request that the easement be approved and any necessary improvements be allowed to construct the easement or construct the Greenway.
Great. Questions for Ms. Sifford?
Just out of curiosity, Kelly, I'm thinking a few years ago, a few years ago, when we built those schools, we put that road that goes between them, it goes out to Stallings Road, I think.
Yes.
Does the Greenway run parallel to that, or do you know?
As far as I know, it connects up with the easements. I do not have a, or it connects up with the subdivisions, but I will see if I can get a copy of the actual map.
I was just curious, you know, because I remember, you know, us doing that.
I think the intention, because there's not a sidewalk out front.
It took us forever to get that road done, so I remember we get that, got that done, and some of that's in floodplain and all that too, so I was just curious. Thank you.
We do have maps. There's the maps.
Yeah. With that map, how far is the Greenway from the school, would you say? Or the proposed?
Yeah.
I mean, I can't.
The-
I mean, looking at it, I can see, it looks close, but maybe it's not.
It is fairly close. Unfortunately, I don't have a tremendous amount of details on this. The school forwarded it to me just to bring it to you all. I can get some more information and be ready to speak at the regular meeting about the details.
I know they have a meeting tonight, so they probably couldn't send a representative, but-
Yeah, they, yeah, I mean, they've already approved it, so they're already happy with the agreement.
Now, is that on the edge of the property that we own, or is there, or will this kind of be running through the property that we own?
It runs along the edge as far as I know. I will get good maps and bring them to the regular meeting for you. We can put this on new business.
Okay. It would be better for it to run along the edge of our property than through it, so I mean, I just wanted to make sure that, looking at the maps, I could not tell.
I'm assuming since it's next to Back Creek that it is off to the side because we couldn't build in the floodplain. But I will get appropriate maps for you and have that at the regular meeting, and we can just put this on new business.
Or you can send it to us.
Okay.
You know, that's fine, you know.
I'll get some details from them.
Based on what you said, the school board approves of it and has already approved it, so they don't have any concerns about-
Yeah, they don't have any concerns with it. They're happy with the location.
Anything of that nature. Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, 4.7, Fiscal Year 2023 Funding Reappropriations, and we're happy to have Roch with us to talk about those items.
Good evening. Every year at this time, we bring a reappropriation item to you. These are for funds that were budget, that are appropriated in FY '23 that will not be spent this year and need to be carried over into the next year for a variety of reasons. It could be a supply chain issue or a number of other reasons. The list of reappropriations are in your package, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on that. What this will do is we're going to be amending the FY '24 budget, budget ordinance that will be approved on the 19th, and this would be an amendment to that to add those dollars to the budget ordinance.
Okay, there's a pretty significant list, list of items here.
Yes. There's some major ones. There's a big one on the reappropriation for an ERP system. That's about $2 million. That's still in the process of being worked out right now, so we're not sure exactly what the dollar amount's going to be, but that's the amount that's been appropriated this year. That's a significant piece of it.
I just had one question, because there was no comments in the justification on some of these line items. It's for the Sheriff's Department, and I'm fine with it. The human trafficking, does that, all those funds that are going to carry over, I know there's a five-year grant, are all those line items underneath it part of that grant or in addition?
That is correct. They're part of the grants. A lot of the dollars you'll see, I have project numbers on them, and those are grants that need to be reappropriated.
Okay, because I noticed some of the other numbers, there's like the, I guess it's the account or project origination codes were a little bit different, so I wanted to make sure that they were still in line with that grant. That's what that was related to.
That is correct.
Okay.
I think my interpretation of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a good example of fiscal responsibility. I think we all hear comments from some organizations that towards the end of their fiscal year, you might hear people say, well, we've got to get this money spent before the end of the year, or we'll lose it. And the process that we're engaging in, in this ordinance, is to make sure that those funds are spent for what they were intended for, regardless of the fact that it may be wise, or as you mentioned, supply chain issues, to make sure those funds go to where they were designated to go. Is that a correct interpretation?
That is correct, and through the proper process.
Right.
Not rushing anything through.
Right, exactly. I would rather see that happen than somebody say, well, we need to get this spent before the end of the year. So I applaud you for that and for bringing that to us. Does anybody else have any additional questions or comments on any of these items? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, 4.8, Resolution Redesigning the Site of the Cabarrus County Courthouse. I am assuming-
Do what? Rach, do you want to do this one? Or Kyle?
Since I wrote it all down.
Yes.
Pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 153A-169, the Board of Commissioners may adopt by resolution any regulations concerning the use of county property and may redesignate the site of any county building, including the courthouse, with proper notice. And that's what I'm here about tonight. So obviously, we had to change the address. It's no longer 77 Union Street. Again, another year and a half, it'll be connected to what was 77 Union Street, but that address will never exist again. So it's been readdressed with 61 Union Street, and today was the day that it opened to the public. So several weeks ago, we put out a public notice, and tonight I need you to suspend the rules and go through the resolution to adopt the courthouse site, the new address of it, and that resolution is attached.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioners, or comments? I would, go right ahead.
Well, first, I'll just say, you know, I understand this is just simple process, but I noticed under the publication of notice that the time is wrong, and so I just want to make sure that we're not getting ourselves into a mess by publicizing the wrong time. Does it matter?
Okay.
All right, well, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. To suspend the rules, to act on this matter, all in, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are, have now suspended the rules, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution to redesignate the site of the Cabarrus County Courthouse as discussed.
So move, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just like to applaud you for directing the construction of the new courthouse, as well as our Communications Department for putting together the ribbon cutting that we all experienced last week. I thought it was an excellent event. It was well-attended. I think the spirit of appreciation that we heard from the folks there was extremely positive. I think it was a very historic event, and I would like to personally say thank you to you and your staff and all the many other people from finance, from IT. That's where we get into trouble, if I dare to try to start naming everybody off, but it was truly a team effort. I think in some of the comments that I and others made at the ribbon cutting was the amount of collaboration that went into the design and construction of that building is something that we should use as a model for other counties all across the state, as well as other projects that we're involved in. And it's been very gratifying to hear from our judges and our attorneys and other people that work in the courthouse, talking about the relationship that has existed between not only county staff, but the architects, the construction company that's been involved. I mean, it has been amazingly positive. You know, I've not heard one single person come forward and complain about the disruptions, and there's always going to be some disruptions, but it was just a model process. And so, thank you to you and to all others involved.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Any other discussion or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion approving the resolution redesignating the site of the Cabarrus County Courthouse, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.9, Fiscal Year '24 Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan. We're happy to have Anthony Hodges with us to talk about that item.
All right, excuse me. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me come up to you today to talk about, to talk about the Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan. As many of you know what this Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding is, it's funding, it's federal and state funding with, then with some, a 10% county match for individuals, provide programs for individuals that are 60 and older, so for our older citizens in Cabarrus County. The block grant allows more local involvement, so there's a list of programs that you can provide, and then the local advisory committee and the Board of Commissioners then decide on which programs to support and the funding to do that. And then each year, we do that. And our advisory committee met over the last few months and discussed that and came up with this recommendation. And as some of you that know that's been on the board for a while, many times when I come to you, I'm presenting numbers that are based on the current year's numbers because the state hasn't given their actual allocation yet. The numbers I'm presenting today are that, that they're our current year's numbers. We did get the state allocation, but it was just a couple of weeks ago, it was too late to get into this year's budget. The numbers I'm presenting are already in this year's budget, so what I'll do is I'm presenting these numbers, then I'll come back next month, basically with a budget amendment for those additional funds we added. What I'm asking for now is the total is $1,122,928, and that includes a county match of 112,992. We actually ended up getting a little bit less than $70,000, more than that, so that will increase the county match by about $6,900. But again, that was too late. We got that right before our last meeting, and the actually, the advisory committee had already discussed that and decided- had already discussed that and decided which, which programs to put that, that extra funding in, but I'll, I'll present that next month. Now, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, commissioners? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we move to item 4.10, Budget Amendment, Ambulance Fees and EMS Billing Service Fees, and we welcome Jim Howden to talk about that item.
Good evening, commissioners. This budget amendment is to increase the ambulance fees and billing service fees for fiscal year 2023. The county partners with a third-party ambulance billing service to help us with our collections with the overall increase in fees being collected this year due to an increase in trips. We have a corresponding payment to our collection partner that also will be increased. So we're asking the Board to approve a budget amendment for $100,000 to cover the remaining fiscal year. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions on that item, commissioners? Okay, we'll move then to item 4.11. Jim has that one as well. Cabarrus County Schools Health Sciences Institute.
Yes, the Cabarrus County Schools have asked for $2 million to be funded to help renovate the current temporary location of their Health Science Institute. This will be renovations for the fiscal year 2024 school year, and it will also be, the $2 million will also be used to help with the development and design of the permanent location that they're looking at, which would be next to the Cabarrus College of Health Science. The funds will come from the Community Investment Funds Fund balance.
Okay, commissioners, questions on this item? So the funds that they're talking about spending now is for the leased space that they currently are in that is owned by Atrium? Is that what?
It would be a combination. Some of the funds would be for renovations, so they can adjust the building for the number of students they're going to have next year, and then a portion will be for the design and development of the permanent structure that they're looking at building.
Yeah, so a portion of that would be just utilized for one year?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Uh huh.
And, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say, and I do not have a breakdown of which is, I can, I can get that, though.
Right.
I'm curious, so you said part of the funds will be used for design of the new facility, is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
We agreed to pay for this new?
It is my understanding that that is to be a modular unit that perhaps are, are, will be purchased by the school system or some that they already own?
They will, it will be purchased by the school system and, and placed on the hospital property.
Yeah, very much.
An ongoing lease at that location.
Ongoing lease at the Atrium property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the, the modular units that they have proposed are very similar to those that are currently housing the early college program, both at the Technology Center as well as South Campus.
And so the, so this item, I mean, I understand that this $2 million, you know, a portion of it's going to be used for that design, but going forward, they're, they're purchasing, you said, the mobile units, and they're agreeing, they're paying for the lease moving forward. That is not a request?
I don't know that that's a lease that we're being charged for.
Ultimately, it will be a portion, I guess, Rodney, you can help me on this one, but it is an annual lease, and that would be a potential cost to the county. It's, did he give, do you remember what that lease was?
I think it was 30,000, 40,000.
So if we agree to this, we could be putting ourselves in a position in the future that they're going to come and ask for us to pay the lease?
Well, most assuredly, because we're their only source of income. Yeah.
And then I had another question. So a portion of this, I understand, is for the renovations. Are they vacating the building once the new, so why would we renovate for a year, six months, however long they plan to be there until they're moving modulars? And, I mean, if they're only going to be there a year to 18 months, I don't foresee the need to renovate it if they're going to be vacating that building shortly thereafter.
Yeah, I haven't had this discussion with them, but I'm assuming the challenge they're having is student enrollment, and that the existing facility was good last, this, this current year because of the number of students, but they're probably expanding it, and they need to be able to accommodate more students within the existing footprint.
Can you get some more information from them on what they're, about what their intent is, as far as?
They will.
The modular, and are we going to be on the hook for the lease in their timeframe?
They will be here Thursday at the Budget Workshop to talk about capital, so Dr. Kibicki will be available.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I think we, we would have an opportunity to ask questions about it then, and of course, this project, for those that may not be aware, is basically an early college, high school-type situation that, that helps to address the shortage of healthcare workers. That, that's what it is designed for, and so I think that, I mean, we can, we have, we'll have that opportunity to have that discussion at the Budget Workshop. We also can certainly pull this off Consent Agenda and ask them to make a presentation in a regular meeting, if it's the pleasure of the Board also.
Then I would make them, just, just sorry, I was just saying, they're, they're planning to meet Thursday at the Budget Meeting, so that, so you can get some of your questions answered there.
Yeah, and it may be that that's sufficient.
Right.
And then, of course, we, we always have the luxury of pulling it off Consent Agenda at the regular meeting anyway.
You don't want me to do that now? Make a motion to do it?
I, I know, you might get your questions answered Thursday, and it may not be necessary, but whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, any other questions on this item?
Just real quickly, Jim, where is this going to be? Is that, that lot across from, I'm confused on where the location is.
I can, the, the school itself is already, they're already operating out of what they call the Plaza, Plaza Building there? If you're familiar with, with the Plaza? It used to be one of their office buildings.
It's an office building adjacent to the hospital.
Yeah.
On Old Concord Road, right there, or Concord Lake Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the permanent location where the modular would go to is where we used to own the building there, and they operate the mental health facility out of there.
And this, that lot's been cleared.
It's been cleared.
Right.
We sold the property to the hospital.
Okay.
And we demolished the building and did that process.
Well, and now you've confused me, because I thought it was going to be in a surface parking lot adjacent to the College of Health Sciences.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
That one's current, okay, so they moved it again?
Yeah, yes, I would, it is up closer to the College.
We just need that presentation on Thursday for the school board.
And before they arrive on Thursday, could we communicate with them to have some numbers about what they're looking for as far as renovation, a breakdown of that $2 million? Because if we're going to spend 1.9 million on renovation, then that, you know, that would be a problem for six months to a year or something. So it'd be good for them to be aware that we want specifics on the numbers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this item? All right, we'll move to item 4.12, Capital Improvement Plan Funded Projects in the 2024 General Fund Budget. Jim's got that one as well.
So what I have here is budget amendments, project ordinance, and reimbursement resolutions that reflect the capital improvement plan that's in the fiscal year 2024 budget. These are the capital projects that hopefully will be approved by June 19th at the, at the Board meeting. What we're attempting to do is get this approved right after the budget's approved. That way, we're not waiting till the middle of July to get these budget amendments done, and we can't start the projects till then. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions on that item, commissioners? Pretty much standard items that will be covered in the budget.
Yes, sir.
But this just prepares us to go ahead and put those in place.
We're trying to get a little bit ahead of the schedule.
Okay, any, any questions, commissioners? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to item 4.13, Government Accounting Standards Board Budget Amendment. Jim has that one. Jim, Jim's got a whole bunch of them here.
Yeah, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 87 Budget Amendment. A few years back, GASB 87 was established, a single model for lease accounting based on the principle that leases are financing of the right to use an asset. So with the implementation of GASB 87, all lease payments that fall within materiality threshold should be budgeted and accounted for as principal and interest. Now, we do that, our principal and interest is all in the CIF fund, but the actual expenditures that we have for our lease payments are in the general fund. So this is just a budget amendment to move those dollars over, so we can do general entries to properly record what GASB 87 is asking us to do.
Questions on that item, commissioners? Okay, we'll move to item 4.14. Jim's got that one as well.
So, so GASB 96 is the exact same thing as GASB 87, except it deals with information technology arrangements. This is any, right to use any party's software. So it's the same concept, so we're just, we pay for those services out of the general fund, we're looking to move them to the capital investment fund because we have to record them as principal and interest. Now, this is our first year with GASB 96, so we are asking the, the Board to establish our capitalization threshold of 100,000. That's what we used for GASB 87, so we'd like to continue to use that dollar amount. So what the, the motion is really to, to establish that materiality threshold and to approve the budget amendment.
Questions on that item? Okay, we move to item 4.15, Health Insurance Fund Balance Budget Amendment.
Each year, the Finance Department reviews the Health Insurance Fund balance. Based on our analysis, a budget amendment has been prepared to ensure claims expenditures do not exceed budget for fiscal year 2023. The budget amendment appropriates fund balance out of the Health Insurance Fund, so we're not using any general fund funds. We believe we needed roughly $320,000 for May and June's expenditures.
Questions on that item? Okay, 4.16, opioid abatement funding.
Cabarrus County has been awarded additional opioid abatement funding. We have an agreement with Partners Healthcare Management, who will reimburse the, reimburse Cabarrus County, who in turn, we are going to have an agreement with Cabarrus Health Alliance for the activities and services that they provide. The funding is $91,514, and there is no county match, so we're just doing a budget amendment to record the revenue and expenditure.
Great. Any questions on that item? Okay, you're off the hook, it looks like, for a minute anyway.
For a minute.
Yeah, so 4.17, Fire Services Compensation, and we're happy to have Lindy Covington for that item.
I was hoping I could keep Jim up here and keep him going for a bit. Maybe you could present this one for me. All righty, good evening, commissioners. My first item is a compensation request for our Fire Services Department, specifically our firefighters. So Lauren, hopefully you can pull that up for us. So basically, this is what we would call a hot jobs request to review this group. It basically is two positions in that classification, and if you have additional questions, I have Jason and Jacob out in the audience to help me with this as well. Just to kind of give you a little bit of background, they did request in the budget process a career development plan, and that has not been moved forward at this point. It is going to require some additional review and conversation before it gets to you, but in the course of reviewing that, we did spot an issue we would like to present to you tonight, and this is more in the name of kind of writing an issue. So we consider this a first step in their request, and again, this is more of an internal pay equity concern that we have. So to give you a little bit of history, hopefully you recall this, we did do a full public safety review in April of 2022. We did not have any need at that time to adjust firefighters. We adjusted fire marshal and fire captain in that study, but didn't do anything with the firefighter level. We then had some issues with EMS, if you recall, and asked to do an additional study. That took place, and we presented in October of '22 for EMS, and that did move a significant portion of our EMS group. What that did, though, is leave our EMT slash firefighter position kind of stranded. So where things landed with the EMT basic, it moved to a grade 13 in October of 2022. If you look at where that's placed with our firefighter, now it is on a different schedule because they're a 24-hour position, but it is a grade below. And the issue that we kind of spotted as we were reviewing their request is we have an, a firefighter that requires an EMT plus a fire credential that's a grade lower than just an EMT basic. So we took that concern to our partner that we work with, Becky Drots with Gorilla HR, to ask her to do a little bit of market research for us, and she did come back and validated that concern for us, that we, you know, kind of have that inequity. And her recommendation was to go ahead and move the firefighter not just equal to the EMS position, but move it above a grade because it is a certification higher. And then in addition to that, we just created that entry-level firefighter, you may recall a little while back, to try to assist with recruitment in the firefighter area. That one is not containing an EMT credential, that's what it's lacking, so it is an entry-level below, part-time only, but we are also requesting to move that up one grade to get that a little bit of higher into the range. She did note that we are struggling, and as are others, as she's looking at market data with our entry point, and that might be something to consider at a later point, but for now, we feel like this is the most appropriate move to go ahead and make these adjustments. It impacts a relatively small number of employees right now, if we base it on today's staffing. We have 11 people that would be impacted, and the recommendation would be to include this in the market study that we're going to be doing later in July, kind of catch them up to the other project work that we're doing. So again, we're really kind of considering this, recalibrating a little bit and trying to correct an internal equity situation. So any questions that I can answer or my counterparts out in the audience?
Just a few. So would this apply to the current, any rate change would apply to the current employees?
Correct. Current, and then also, as we recruit, we would be able to recruit with that higher grade, which would hopefully be more attractive to others.
Got you. And you said this is just a start, because I, I received some information from the Kannapolis Fire Department, and they're starting, they went from, their starting salary was 38,000 roughly, they are now starting at 44. Do we think we're going to be able to retain and, and attract more to fill those empty spots at this rate? Because it, to me, I, I mean, I, it's just, I have a thing, I have a feeling we're still going to have a little bit of trouble.
Yep, I think this is, like I said, a starting point. We do have another proposal from them that bears some more conversation.
Okay.
So I think we would like to kind of go through that process and have your input on what is that future next step we need to take. So our request would be to at least move them to this level, and then, of course, as warranted, come back for future or additional consideration. I think this helps, but again, retention is a different subject than getting people in the door.
Yeah.
But right now, we at least see that we are below our own internal benchmark with the EMT group.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, I'm just, with the numbers here, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we are still looking in order to retain, because I'd hate to lose the good firefighters and EMTs that we do have because of a six or whatever, six or thousand, $7,000 difference.
Yeah.
And, you know, just drive to Kannapolis or one of the surrounding municipalities that has a firearm.
And one of the things that's been a bit challenging for us with this group, as we've talked to our comp partner, is our firefighter positions are a little bit different, but we can match up at least to the entry level. They may not be driving fire engines, so there's a different skill set, but at least looking at where we match up to entry fire and like city fire departments. So again, we feel like this is a good first step, but the department would like some future consideration as well.
Okay, no, I, I agree, it is a good step. I just want us to look at it a little bit further, and as long as we're doing that, I'm fine.
I think you said that this would be included in the next salary study for additional?
Well, we, we did, like I said, a very brief, just to get this before you, because we felt like we couldn't wait for a full-blown study. But we are looking at their request for some educational consideration and can wrap anything more robust into that as warranted. So, yep, they will be included as all of our departments, as their cycle comes back around.
Okay, other additional questions, commissioners? All right, thank you.
All right, I'm your next.
Okay, and then also from Human Resources Personnel Ordinance Update.
And the topic that we are... And the topic that we are bringing to you tonight for the Personnel Ordinance is the longevity pay plan, so that's actually something that's been included in the budget, and we've had some, I think, brief conversation with that at future or past meetings. So what we would need to do with the ordinance is replace the current language that's in there. We have an old longevity plan that only has a very few people, five or six, I think, still on it, that was disbanded in July of nineteen ninety-three. So that language is in there, so you can see what we would be replacing. The new language would be for the new pay plan, and we are also replacing, intention is to replace our current service recognition payment plan with this. That's where we recognize employees right now every five years with a monetary award. We would still like to keep the ceremony and the recognition item, but the compensation would roll into this new schedule. So basically, what this does is just outline the employees who would be eligible and how things would roll out. So it would cover as currently proposed, full-time and part-time. The part-time positions that are in this would be basically our EMS staff, nine one-oh-twos, which is working greater than a thousand hours per year, nine one-oh-threes, work less than that, but basically, the only department right now that has a substantial number of one-oh-threes is EMS, and we definitely see value in what they provide. And we're working on a few options with payroll and finance, as well as IT tied to another project and how it might fit in. So the goal is to get the money to employees before the end of the calendar year. We have had some requests for us to tie this to employees' actual anniversary date. It would be more of a true, you know, across my anniversary milestone, here's a payment. We can't easily do that right now with our current computer system, but depending on where that goes in the future, we may ask for a different structure. But for right now, the plan would be one-time annually, your tier based on your, your service, and again, having to be employed at the time of the payment. So I think that's all the basic information contained in the request. Is there any question I can answer about this project?
Questions? Yes, sir?
I have one quick question. On the, the proposed longevity plan, what's that going to net out for the county expense-wise projected?
Do you have the total, Rodney? I don't, I know we ran it. Yeah, so as employees leave us, they drop off, and it will take people a while to move on, but people could move up through the tiers as they're here longer. I think our theory is that over time, that number is moving down and not up, just based on the track record with.
Well, I understand you to say that the longevity plan had been discontinued in nineteen ninety-three?
No one knew could join on, so there were a very few remaining employees, and the amount of that is very insignificant compared to this, like twenty dollars of pay.
When we do our annual employee recognition, well, there's longevity pay tied to that. Is that right?
That's, that's the amount that we would disband. That's a much smaller payment, so an employee who's been here for forty years is getting a four-hundred-dollar check, and they're getting that once every five years as their date rolls around. So this one is a much more aggressive retention program, and it's modeled off of others we've seen with some other jurisdictions. So it's, you know, hopefully a factor to help us retain folks. We also had looked at some COLA rates, and, you know, our COLA is very moderate. We've been seeing numbers on listserv today between three and seven percent COLA. So, you know, the fact that we're doing a one percent COLA, hopefully this can kind of help offset that and give employees an incentive to hang on and keep working longer.
Well, one thing about it, and I learned this a long time ago as a former business owner, you can't do enough for your people, because your people are what make it all happen. You've got good people. It costs money to hire good people, and it's a whole lot cheaper to retain than it is to go out and have to hire and retrain. And I learned that lesson a long time ago, and so I think that you need to do all you can and everything you can to support the workforce, because they're the ones that gets the work done. And so I'm very supportive of the longevity pay plan, and I think that it will help with employee retention, because especially somebody who's been around four years, he's, I might as well hang around a little longer or get that longevity bonus. And so I think it's a good thing, and I'm glad that you brought this back to us. Thank you, Lundie.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So now, is this an annual payment? Okay. And so with the employee recognition that you're going to, I guess, roll over into this, is that an annual payment, or was that just once every five years?
It was once every five years for the monetary gift. We would still want to continue doing like the, we do a PIN or a TITAC as employees get their service year. So we still would want to do some kind of recognition or celebration of them as a group. But yes, this would replace the financial piece and be an annual versus every five year.
Okay, well, certainly, I, I think it's a good idea for employee retention. Now, I don't see where this plan, and maybe I'm missing it, is it tied to income threshold? So if we have an employee that's making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, two hundred thousand dollars a year, are they, they could potentially be getting the twenty-five-hundred-dollar bonus annually? Okay.
Yep, we did not scale it to income for this program. We basically modeled it off of, if you recall, the COVID bonus that you all provided with, with that funding. So it's kind of modeled off of that. The amounts, of course, are different, but that's kind of the framework.
Okay. I would like to see some breakdown in the numbers with income threshold. So, you know, if, and I don't know what the magic number could be, but, you know, I feel if somebody's making two hundred thousand plus or a hundred and fifty thousand plus, I'm not sure there needs to be an annual bonus in addition. I would just be interested in how many folks that would affect.
Okay. So an example by tiers and various service by tiers and then income by tiers?
Right, so I guess it wouldn't matter. I mean, if you have been here twenty-five years and you're making less than a hundred thousand, well, then I guess you're, you would be receiving the, you would be receiving the twenty-five-hundred dollars. But if you're, you know, making a hundred and fifty thousand or more, I guess, you know, I guess, you, are you looking for a, an income threshold number to, to be able to generate that?
I'm just trying to figure out how detailed, is it sufficient to do it with numbers? So like a count of employees in each of the tier categories? And then is it a hundred or under, or I'm trying to figure out how you?
I mean, I, what I'm looking at it more is income threshold. So if, you know, if you're making over a hundred and fifty thousand a year, then how, how many people would that, well, say, this current year, how many, how many employees would that affect?
Okay.
Or would be, you know, disqualified from that?
Okay, so do you want one number, or do you want a multiple? Do you want a hundred, a hundred and fifty, or how?
Well, I'll say a hundred and fifty.
Would be in each category?
We'd say a hundred and fifty.
Just one break point?
And it doesn't have to be category. It could just be how many folks.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's going to be some of those in each of these, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five?
So you think we have an employee that's been here less than five years that makes a hundred and fifty thousand?
Entirely possible, yeah.
We brought him in as a lateral hire, yeah.
Yeah. If that's the case, I would be interested in knowing that, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Because I mean, if there's a way that, you know, some of that money could be pushed back down to some of the folks who are making less, I think that would be more beneficial, but.
So you got a handle of what, what he's requesting, you think?
I think I do. I'll do a draft, and if I'm not on target, we'll.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the, the other thing that, I'm going to make sure I understand correctly. If, if I've been working for Cabarrus County for twenty-five years, and I'm do, eligible for a twenty-five-hundred-dollar bonus, and I submit my resignation to be effective September thirtieth, I will not get a bonus because I will not be an employee as of October first. Is that correct?
Kinda, but actually, if you have to, that's the date we use for the chart. If you submit your resignation in September, yes, you'll fall off, you wouldn't be paid. But also, if you submit your resignation and you leave in November, and we cut the checks in December, you're also not going to receive it, even though you've hit that date, because we're not paying it as you reach your anniversary. We have a one-time payout date, then you have to be here through the part we pay.
If I reached my anniversary on December thirty-first, but yet I still didn't hang in there till October the first, I wouldn't get.
Yeah, or like in my case, my anniversary's in January. If I don't stay around till the checks are issued, and that could be December.
Right.
Yeah, so some people will be going a little longer. That's why there's a theory that, you know, truing it up to the actual anniversary date would be nice, but that's a lot to ask payroll to, to do and to handle with their current system.
Yeah, because it would be ongoing all the time, all year round, yeah.
And their intention is to do this as a separate paycheck between regular pay, so employees will really see the benefit of it. It'll be, you know, more of a substantial item for them.
Right, right, and I, and I make those comments simply because I could envision that, that somebody would come back and say, "I worked my twenty-five years, but I wasn't here October first. I should still get my bonus, even though I'm no longer an employee of the county."
Still employed at the date of payout.
Right, okay.
That's the language we put in there and intending to.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there, is there not a way to work around that where, I mean, because that doesn't seem quite fair if somebody, you know, doesn't hang around until that time, but they have worked, you know? If I had worked here, you know, as you said, if you worked here, you know, twenty-five years and you put in your time, but yet you don't stay long enough to win those, I mean, I, I understand that it, it could be the true anniversary date, but I know that's a lot of, I know that's a lot of paperwork, but there's no way of still, whenever those checks are cut, to be able to send it to somebody who?
Well, we're paying them through payroll, and once they leave, they're off payroll. The only way to do that would be to pay it as like an AP, like as a vendor payment. It would be a totally different process, because once they leave, we can no longer pay them through payroll. They're terminated out of the system, if that makes sense. We have had the same issue in times past with the service recognition. We've had people who've left before those checks are cut, and we can't, you know.
So what have you done in that situation?
We don't pay, I mean, that's kind of been the rule, so if you're not here when the payment is made, you forfeit it.
I would contend that it is a retention bonus, and if they're gone, we're not retaining them. So paying, then it would become a, we're paying you to leave bonus, right? Yeah, so we would counter, be counteracted, counterintuitive to what we're trying to do.
And Jim is here who maybe can speak to that a little better than I could, but yet my understanding is it does cross over once they leave payroll. We would really have to utilize a different way to chase them down, make that payment.
And the reason that I would be in support of this is to retain people, to encourage people to continue to work for Cabarrus County.
The county attorney's probably going to get mad at me because I'm going to pretend to be a lawyer for a second. So I, so I think the issue with, once somebody has separated, there's actually multiple blog posts, if you go to the school government's website on this issue, is they're no longer a county employee, and so we can no longer pay them. It's a constitutional law issue. And so, and where this has come up before is if you separate from service and now we want to provide you a watch for your retirement, we can provide it before you retire, but we can't provide it after you retire. And so it's the same concept.
So can we not give them their bonus before they're separate?
That would be asking my friends in finance to do a lot of manual, right now, our computer system would not support that easily. We can do this as a one-time file and upload, but catching it and making those payments, I would be concerned we would miss somebody if we were trying to do it manually in that manner.
Okay, other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to item four point nineteen from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Rob Wallace Phase Two B Bid Award. Happy to have Michael Miller and Kyle Billiford on that item.
So I'll go through a timeline of the Rob Wallace Park Phase Two B project. This was the project that we did delay the bidding so that the town of Midland could have their Fourth of July celebration. On April fifth, two thousand twenty-three, Cabarrus County advertised a request for bid for Rob Wallace Park Phase Two B project. A pre-bid meeting was held on-site on April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Bids were received on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Four bids were received for the project, and you should have a copy of the bid tabulation as the third page of, of the agenda item. Based on the bid tabulation, both staff and the design team recommends Ike's Construction be awarded the contract for the project, which will commence the second week of July two thousand twenty-three. However, we're in front of you tonight to ask you to suspend the rules and approve it now so we can move forward with a notice to proceed, and that's not so we can start before the celebration, that's so we can start procuring the materials before the celebration. And it's important to tell you, we would not store them on-site where the celebration is happening.
Okay, commissioners, questions on this item?
Chair, on my motion, we suspend the rules so we can vote on it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract between Cabarrus County and Ike's Construction Incorporated and authorize the county manager to execute the contract on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have been here for approaching two hours. We've got ten more items on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to take a short break? Okay, well, we will, I will declare the meeting in recess for five minutes for a quick break, and we will reconvene at approximately seven twenty. Okay, we will call the meeting back to order at 7:20 as proposed. So the next item will be item 4.20 from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Approval of Fiscal Year 2324 JCPC Certification, and I think Jim is back with us for that one.
Yes, sir. We are asking the board to approve the Junior Juvenile Crime Prevention Council's Fiscal Year 2324 JCP Certification at this time. Normally, we would have the funding plan also for you to approve, but right now, it is under appeal by one of the programs. So until that's resolved, I will not be able to bring it to the board. So for today, we're just asking if you would approve the 2324 certification.
Okay, questions on that item, commissioners? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4.21 from Planning, Community Development Budget Amendment, and happy to have Kelly Sifford back for that item.
The budget amendment that's attached is for the Housing and Home Improvement Program. That program requires that we ask for donations from the people that we provide service to if they're over a certain income. We've collected, well, we had collected $190, but we collected another $20 today. So we are going to revise the budget amendment to make it $210, so that will be in the agenda. But I want to go ahead and put that out there so that we can keep it on the consent if possible. But it's just the basic, regular activity. It's required to go back into the program, so that's all this is.
Yeah, so you're required to ask for donations, but it's not mandatory that they make them?
Correct. It has no impact on service whatsoever. We've already provided the service, and then we ask for a donation, and they can provide it or not provide it. And the particular donation that we received today, the lady comes in every month and gives us $20 pretty much every month, just because she appreciates the service that we provided.
Right, correct.
Is that a state requirement, or what?
It is.
Yeah.
It is, it's cost matched, basically, that the program requires if they're over a certain income. We make it clear to people that, you know, it has no impact whatsoever on service before we, you know, when we first talk about the program and the program requirements, we tell them that, you know, we will be sending you this, you know, asking, but, you know, it has no impact on service. So everybody's very clear about that to begin with.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 4.22 from Planning as well, Community Development Grant Required Plans and Programs. We're happy to have Robert Anderson for that item.
Good evening, commissioners. So every three years, we're required to renew some federally mandated programs as part of our home and CDBG programs. Those programs cover various issues such as fair housing, equal opportunities, anti-displacement, and a few others. The plans I've submitted to you, they have not changed from this current year's plans. These new plans will cover us until June of 2026.
Okay, questions on that item, commissioners? All right, thank you, sir.
Evening.
Okay, Register of Deeds, Use of Register of Deeds Automation Fund for re-indexing Cabarrus County land records. We're happy to have Register of Deeds Wayne Nixon with us.
Good evening. We're seeking, we need to re-index the documents prior to January 1, 1983. If you go to our website and look at any land records from 1983 on to currently, you can put in a party's name, and it pulls up all transactions. If you were two days before that, or the day before that, on December 31st, 1982, and looking for something, what you would get would be a visual image of our books. And it works, and the lawyers know how to use it, and they don't like it, but they can use it. But the public, it's very cumbersome and very confusing. Basically, prior to 1983, our index is visual images of our books. And you can imagine then, if you go online, try to look at a document from our books, and have to turn pages, and then go to another section to look at the document, it's complex versus a very user-friendly system from 1983 onward. To do this, it'll take about a year. The cost is $275,000, and it'll take us back from 1983 to 1938. And to give you some idea, I looked today, and 1938 is about Book 150 of our books. We're now on $15,000. So it takes you back really about as far as you need to go, maybe even a little further. But to fund this, the legislature, we have an automation fund, which is mandated by statute and funded by a portion of the Register of Deeds fees. It's a non-reverting fund, so the money just stays there. So, and the purpose of it is to upgrade technology and upgrade the ability to use the Register of Deeds office. To give an example, we haven't had to have additional people since I've been here because we went to e-recording. So technology's made a big difference, and will continue to make a big difference for us. Really, I'm here for any questions you might have. If you haven't used our system, it's sort of like a blind man describing an elephant, you know, it's...
Any questions for Mr. Nixon? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to discussion items. Number five, and number 5.1 is alternative funding options, and this is on the agenda at the request of Commissioner Workman. I will turn the floor over to him.
What this is, is when we went to the NACO conference, I rode with Steve, eight hours to DC, seven, eight hours. And, you know, we had several talks, but one of the things I was wanting to do was try to find different ways to find money outside of raising taxes, which nobody wants to do. And one of the things that came up, I've heard it referenced, two different ways, either sponsorships or selling the naming rights of things. What that means is selling the naming rights of the school stadiums, the fields, the Cabarrus Arena. Every single arena you go to has a name, ours is just Cabarrus Arena. Park shelters, baseball fields at parks. I gave a brief presentation at Active Living in Parks. They were, seemed to be, to be pretty supportive of it. I met with Dr. Kapicki, and he is presenting this idea tonight to the school board as well, because in order for anything with the schools, the school has to sign on. Anything with Active Living in Parks, they would have to sign on as well. There is a massive amount of kinks to work out as far as what do you charge? How long? Is it one year? Is it two years? Just an example, it's like a Gatorade Field or a T-Mobile Shelter, just getting that money here in the community. And what we, what I've talked about to Dr. Kapicki is creating a line item for the schools in our budget that would help start offsetting the massive deferred maintenance costs that they have, to where they can request their top 12 priorities that they always do during the budget. But then, say you have the tennis courts, you have the track and field at Hickory Ridge that needs to be replaced as well. The school board can then request the money that comes in from those naming rights for specific locations. It was made very clear that I apparently stepped on some toes with the tennis courts with the school board. So this still gives the school board the option to pick which one that they want to fund out of those. But it also keeps the money here as kind of a checks and balances instead of just giving it over. And it would be the same thing as far as Active Living in Parks, creating a line item for them, so that it's right if it's theirs, they should get the money. So if it's a school stadium, a school field, and I know that some of the stadiums are named, some of the fields are named, so there's some kinks to work out. But it was a thought that was thrown around. There's numbers out there, if you look, from hundreds and hundreds of thousands to millions that can come in. It depends on how successful it is. And so that's why I wanted to just start the discussion on it just tonight, to kind of try to get the ball moving forward, to find any way that we could start making a dent into, basically, into deferred maintenance for the schools. Because it seems like things always fall to the bottom, and they never work their way up to the top just because other needs come up. But doing it this way would allow the school system to still have their say-so, but provide the checks and balances with, it's not just here, here's a bunch of money, you know, do what you want. So that's kind of the gist of it. I just wanted to bring it up tonight, to throw it out. Again, I know there is a massive amount of work that needs to go into that. There'd have to be parameters set for naming rights, years, dollars, but that's what that item is, is just trying to find a different outside-of-the-box way of thinking to bring some of that money in. I know there's money that's been spent in Charlotte by local companies for advertising. That money could be here in Cabarrus County instead of Mecklenburg County. And so that's what this item is on. Again, I'm open to any comments. I know it is a long road ahead to make that work, but it's something that I am fairly confident we could be successful at, and it would relieve some of the issues without putting that burden on the taxpayers.
Commissioners, questions or comments on this item?
Well, what I would say, and of course, Kenny, you and I talked about this, you know, you run it by me, and it's a great idea. And all of us know what the definition of insanity is. You know, you do the same thing over and over and over and over and expect a different result. That don't always happen. And all we've ever done is budget, 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 same process, year after year after year. And so this is sort of out-of-the-box thinking. But one of the issues that I see with this, and once again, we talked about it, was a lot of the, particularly for the schools, the gymnasiums and the stadiums and things like that, they're already named posthumous for people that had an effect on that school or the community or whatever. And so I wouldn't want to infringe on that. But I think that there are other facilities that probably could. But, you know, you wouldn't need but just $1 million a year sponsor for somewhere, the event center, you know, for example, would pay a lot of the deferred maintenance bills that we don't have now. So, you know, anything that we could get would be more than what we got now to help with deferred maintenance. And I remember one time when I was on the school board, it was brought up at one of our meetings that I had attended, a school board meeting somewhere out of the county, and they were talking about doing advertising on school buses to generate income for the schools. So this is really no different, but it would be for the schools. And, but like you said, though, it's going to take a lot of work, a lot of ironing out, and all the different things that would come into making it work, you know. But it is good thinking out of the box, though, and because nobody wants to raise taxes. And, you know, just to give you an example, this is sort of off the topic of this, but like, you know, you folks that spoke tonight about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, I think y'all were requesting something like $8 million to continue that. Well, see, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't have no way of knowing, but for ever $3 million that we get, that's a penny on the tax rate. And nobody wants to raise the tax rate. So if you're asking for $8 million, that's almost 3 cents on the tax rate. And so there's always a cost to it. But anyway, that straight off of it there a little bit, but I think out-of-the-box thinking is good. And so it's just a lot on the plate right now, but we'll sure look at it. I will, anyway, Kenny.
Other comments? Yes, sir?
Well, you know, first I'll say, you know, this is first I'm hearing of this, so I can't commit one way or the other. You know, it's something I would, you know, certainly think about. I will ask, is there any other school districts that, you know, participate in something like this around the state? I mean, I'm just not familiar if they're...
State, I know Texas does it, and other schools up north.
Okay, yeah. And then I think we'd be hard-pressed to find somebody that would sponsor the arena for $1 million a year, but I think that would be a tall request. Yeah, you know, one thing I feel like we could be opening up a can of worms for, too, is depending on what kind of sponsor it could be. And I know that that would have to be worked through. Of course, you wouldn't want, you know, probably alcohol or tobacco or something sponsoring a school facility. And so, I mean, so I know that that wouldn't. But, you know, we, I'm sure we have all seen everything in the news, you know, with corporations and maybe some of their choices. And so we could be opening up a can of worm of, you know, some people's going to agree with this corp, a corporation that takes a stance on political issues, which I feel that right or left, a corporation should just focus on business and not, you know, take a stance on political issue. But if you have a corporation that's on the left or the right sponsoring a government facility, are we going to run into issues there? And, you know, we've seen that in the news recently with a couple of corporations. That's just my initial thoughts. It'd be interesting to know if there's any other districts, you know, the school districts do this. Now, I know, I know probably county arenas or things like that, certainly they do, but I think it could get real tricky with the school system. But I applaud your efforts in trying to, you know, find alternative revenue streams. Certainly, you know, I'm all in favor of doing that than raising taxes. But, you know, this just being the first time hearing of it, that's just my initial thoughts.
Yeah, I would say thanks for, you know, this is the first time I'm also hearing about it, but thanks for bringing this to us. There's been stuff in the news here lately where student athletes are getting sponsorships from like Nike and Adidas and stuff. There was some legislation, I'm not sure if it was here or not, that... There was some legislation, I'm not sure if it was here or not, that was passed to allow the students, you know, the high school students to do that. That may be something that, that may be part of that if we were to go down this road for sponsorships for, for various buildings and such. And then I did have a question, and I may have not heard it when we were talking. So if I wanted to give, say, five hundred thousand to name Northwest Cabarrus High School's field after me for a year or something like that, am I able to pick where I wanted to go if I'm the sponsor, or is it the school's designation?
We haven't got that for you. But that is one of the kinks that we talked about, as well as one of Lynn's concerns, is if it, if it's a field that's named, could you still possibly do the stadium but leave the field? So name the stadium something, but still at the whatever field in honor of. So, so those are all kind of making a pros and cons list, and I've added the sponsorships versus scholarships.
Yeah, yeah, that was one, but yeah, I had seen it most recently in the news, and if I find the article, I'll send it to everybody, but they were talking about allowing students, athletes to be sponsored by Coca-Cola or whatever it might be to help them in their endeavors in college and going forward. I don't know the ins and outs of it, it was, you know, like I said, it was a brief article that I had read, but that may be something I want to take a look at, because I think if there was some state law, I'm not sure if it was a state, don't quote me on that, that passed it and said it was okay to have, you know, high school athletes sponsored just like professional athletes out there, you know, playing NBA or NFL. But thank you for bringing this to our attention.
With that, I would also say that I would be hesitant to allow a field to be, I know that we have, you know, Commissioner Schu, you mentioned, you know, gymnasiums and maybe some of the football fields that are named after an individual, but that's a, probably a hundred percent of the time, it's a deceased individual. And so I feel that that would only be appropriate than somebody sponsoring it, that's, because we've seen issues with that, with buildings being named after people that are still alive and then they get in trouble or things of that nature.
And, and there's going to be a lot of workarounds to kind of get a rough draft ready just to, to, to discuss. I would say it's going to be several months of work just to try to, you know, at least several months, but something I'm willing to do, something I'm willing to look at, and I appreciate any help splitting it up and seeing what, what we can do to try to find something.
State Commissioners, County Schools is discussing it tonight?
Yeah, Dr. Kapicki is presenting tonight. Again, he's just floating the idea out there the same night that I was doing it. I had met with him a week and a half ago. He, he loved it, he said the schools up north do it. But again, it's, his board has to make that decision, he can't do it. So he was going to present that tonight.
Okay.
I think it is an excellent idea. I think we should pursue it right away. I think Commissioner Shang, what you're talking about, that is for the benefit of those individual athletes. We're talking only about things that would be for the benefit of the county or for the school system.
Right, but that may be something to look at as to the structure of how they did it for that particular athlete as it would be to a particular football field or a baseball field.
Yeah, I think probably, yeah, I think we probably know what the structure is, that it has to, it's an outstanding player that they want to attach their name to, but if we can do this with, with county facilities, with school system facilities, anything that would, would benefit our, our schools and our taxpayers, I, I think it is certainly worth pursuing. And I would propose that, that we put together a committee, a task force, however we would like to, to label it. If, if Commissioner Workman would be willing to, to head that up, and he's shaking his head yes, I think that would be, would be great. I'm not sure just exactly if that's something that we need to vote on or if we can do that by consensus, but I think representation from parks and active living along with appropriate representation from the, from the school system to come up with kind of an outline that gives us some rules and regulations as, as to how we might propose that. Some of the, some of the things that I can see that, that there may be some ejection to is let's say, for example, if Under Armour wanted to sponsor West Cabarrus High School's uniforms, and they wanted to provide a full complement of apparel for every athlete at that school, then would come the question of fairness if they did not want to do the same thing for, for another school that may be in a less populated area. I think that, that's something that maybe we'd need to take a look at and establish some guidelines on in, in the same light. And, and I use West Cabarrus as an example because that's our newest high school, but they have, they have fields there that have been funded through revenue from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, from tourism funds. So it may be that we may need to include them in the, the task force as well. And also, those might be very attractive fields for a corporation to sponsor because we're bringing in tournaments from, from all around the state, so that may be of a higher visibility. So then someone's going to say, well, okay, people want to sponsor all these fields at West Cabarrus, but they're not wanting to sponsor fields at Mount Pleasant or Concord High School or name, fill in the blank. Then my answer to that would be if, if they're providing funds to sponsor fields at these other high schools, then, then that frees up our funds that we would have been spending there to spend on these other high schools. Or it could be that just because they sponsor a field at West Cabarrus, that, that those funds would go into this general fund as you have mentioned, that would benefit everybody all, all over the county, wherever there was a need. So, so I think we could address any concerns that anybody might have there. And, you know, and I'm sure that there are some other things that we can look at, maybe across the state. It would, it would be fine with me if we served as a leader across the state. I think that if we came up with a well-thought-out program with good guidelines and, and, and address the, and define the, the benefits of it, it may be something that, that other counties across the state might want to duplicate. So, you know, I, I applaud you for the thinking outside the box, coming up with other ways. Any way that we can, can benefit our folks here without it costing our taxpayers is a positive thing. That's, that's what I have often said about, when we've had discussions about sales tax revenue, we're, we are very fortunate here in Cabarrus County to have a tremendous amount of tourism that, that comes into our county and people that come and shop at Concord Mills and other locations that do not live in Cabarrus County. And so I view that as being very positive. That's the way that we can get other people to come and pay for things that we're doing in Cabarrus County. So, you know, that, that's, that's a big positive, and I think this is an extension of that. So, you know, I'd love to, I'd love to see us get, get busy, get started working on some proposals, then those proposals can come back to this board and can come back to the school board. And if we can get, you know, everybody feels comfortable with it, the sooner the better.
One thing I would say is I want us to be very cautious of, we don't want to become too commercialized. I, I'm not sure I want to drive in the county parks around the county and see corporate advertisements on all the shelters and, you know, whenever you go to a park, you're there to take in the, you know, the scenery and the relaxed atmosphere, and I'm not sure we want to see corporate, like I said, corporate advertisements on all the shelters and structures and things of that nature. So I would caution us about being too commercialized if we're heading in that direction. Now, ball fields at a school or something, I feel that's probably more appropriate.
I kind of feel like I do want us to be more commercialized. I, I do, if we are free receiving income to provide additional park amenities, and if you go to Frankless Park, I don't know, how many of the, a lot of how many shelters at Frankless Park are already named for, there's a Philip Morris Shelter still out there.
Most of them.
But it's, but they're small, it's...
I've been out there.
Yeah, we're not talking about neon signs.
Well, we've not defined that, so that's why I'm, I'm trying to make sure it doesn't get out of control, because I don't want to pull on the park and see huge corporate signs, you know, everywhere.
Right. I just wanted to address Commissioner Schu and Meesmer's concern. One of the first things that got brought up was that the fields already being named for, or buildings being named for people that have passed away. And I, I just wanted to make it clear that the last thing, I, I think I could comfortably speak for everybody's, that we, we do not want to degrade or desecrate that. That's not what this is looking to do. So, um, so that'll be obviously one of the, the top priorities to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I just hear you on that one.
And of course, I think a good example is when I go to Atrium Baseball Stadium in downtown Kannapolis, and of course, their name is prominently displayed there as well as the number of electronic advertising opportunities that they have on the scoreboard and around the stadium. It just all looks kind of normal to me, and, and I, I think that it could become that way for, for athletics in our high schools as well. I'm sure if there are members of the public that disagree with that, we'll, we'll hear from them before, before we make a decision on it. So welcome, welcome that input as well. Yeah, and maybe, I mean, maybe that's something we talk about. I mean, I know that Parks and Active Living has a very active volunteer board structure, so I'm sure that they would be willing to provide some, some input on that as well.
And Londa had already provided me just a super brief example, way, way scaled down compared to this, but it kind of lays it out in a nice format where it's like for, for this amount of years, for this much money, this is what you get. So it kind of, but it's, it's on a, a very scaled down version, so we'll, we'll work on it, but it's out there, it's just putting in, putting in the work to make it happen.
I mean, just, just as an example, there may be somebody out there that is an alumni of Central Cabarrus High School that says, I heard your discussion about the tennis court issues that you're experiencing there, and, and I played tennis when I was a student at Central Cabarrus, and I'd like to, I'd like to, to commit some funds to, to reconstructing that in return for my, my name or my company's name being on it, you know, so, yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunities.
Just one last comment too, Kenny, when you, doing your research on this, you know, we talked about the facilities that's already named, such as stadiums and that type thing. I personally, of course, it would be contradictory what Commissioner Meesmer wants, the commercialization of whatever, but we could sell billboards as well, you know, on the end zones of the football stadiums that used to, when I went to school, they had big sundrop banners that you'd roll up and throw away. And there was no benefit to anybody there except for the sundrop company, but they would put these banners up, but if you had billboards on, on the end zones and they were sold, and if, you know, Central sold ten and Hickory Ridge sold five, well, that would be up to them. They all got parent teacher organizations that could participate in that as well.
And I've seen it go all the way down to even the, the pads on, on a goalpost in the end zone, right there, dead center on, on the goalpost. So there's different ideas out there for just figuring out what we as a board are comfortable with.
Yeah, and it could be that whatever the school does, it's for that school, you know, this, this Central's got ten and Hickory Ridge has got five, well, Hickory Ridge needs to work a little harder to get ten, you know, and that's the way I look at it, but that's just my train of thought.
I think each school might, or the school system may put a little bit restrictions. I mean, I think we need to follow their guidance as to what they want on their fields or, you know, how many billboards or how, what kind of advertising, that type of thing. Also, as far as your task force, we can't forget about Kannapolis City Schools, and I will mention it, I think the school board, we need to them.
Dr. Kapicki had said that there'd have to be obviously several policies that go into place that would allow them to even, if it's what they wanted to do.
Right.
Again, that all hinges on them, you can't, we can't advertise something if they don't want it. But he said there'd have to be several policies that would go into place that would allow them to, to be able to, to make this happen.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we, you know, bring us the proposal back, you know, work on it and see, but see if the school system, what they have to say, parks and rec, I mean, I think we need to take a look at it and see, and obviously have our county attorney take a peek at it too, make sure we are not getting any legal issues with any of that.
Okay, thank you for the recommendation and agreeing to, to head up that task force. Let us know how we can assist you in moving forward. I, I hear you, we'll, we'll talk about that. Yeah, so if there's no other discussion, we'll move to item 5.2, and that is a discussion on Central Cabarrus High School tennis courts, and I will turn it back to you on that item as well, Commissioner Workman.
We had, the tennis team came and spoke last, last meeting. They spoke at the school board. I've had several conversations with the chair, with Dr. Kapicki. I was able to get an actual, well, first, I don't know if I'll be able to get a letter from the school board stating that they want that money directly for that. However, they did originally request it in our budget, it just didn't get funded. So in a way, they have already approved it, if you want to look at it that way. There's going to be more discussion with them, but I talked to Tim Louder from the school system. I do have an estimate that he, he gave from Shellco, and I can, I can make copies, I just got them today. I can make copies and give them to everybody tonight if they'd like to see them. But to, to pretty much demolish the first set of courts, they had, they came out and looked, and the problem with the first set is that there's, there's drainage issues underneath it. So technically, we could go in and we could resurface it, but you're just temporarily patching it because there's drainage that comes off of Highway 49 to hit those courts. But to, to build two, so to, to rebuild the first two, to resurface the middle two and then build two brand new ones, that the estimate they got from, from Shellco was five hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Well, that would act, that's, I take that back, that is to resurface the floor and rebuild it. If you wanted to, to actually demolish and rebuild the first two, you're looking at an additional two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. And if you want to add drainage to that first one, since it's already demolished, if that's the route, the additional drainage underneath it would be eight thousand, eighty-one dollars. They did provide a estimate for lights as well, several of the students had talked about it, but after talking to, to Tim today, I think if they just have six usable courts, you can get by without the lights, but if the lights, the lighting estimate that they did give, lighting all six courts, and that's running the wiring, the poles and the LED lighting was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I wanted to bring this here to us tonight because I actually have some numbers, but I'm not going to make a motion on this tonight. They, they have found an alternative option. There is a, a thing called the Pro Bounce System, and I, the way it was explained to me was if, if you can imagine turf and then it's sealed over top, it kind of makes it spongy. It can be applied over asphalt, over rock, and he said that that is roughly fifty-five thousand per court, so it'd be three hundred and thirty thousand for six courts. So that is significantly cheaper than the other options. They are having, Tim Louder said they are having a presentation on this system this Wednesday, and then they are going to a school in Statesville that has that system to see if that is feasible and would allow us to save money. So that's kind of the update on it right now. Again, I'll get you guys, I printed them out today, I'll get you guys copies of these before you leave so you can have the numbers in front of you before we leave. And I know it will be discussed with the school system again as well, so that's the update on it.
So, nothing on our agenda for our regular meeting, or do you want this on as a new business item on, for the regular meeting? business item for the regular meeting?
I'll add it as a new business item for our regular meeting.
Yeah, so when we approve the agenda for the regular meeting, we'll need to add that one on. That'll be F2, if that's what you would like.
That's fine.
And one question, you indicated that the school system had included this in their request, but it was not funded. Were there other things that they prioritized higher than this that also were not funded?
Yes, so, and Rodney or Mike can jump in if I get it wrong, but they were asked for their top 12 priorities, which they gave. And I believe by then, and that was the top 12 that the school system chose was most important to them. And by the time we reached, I think, number seven, it was pretty much gone, number seven, eight. So, did they request it? Yes, they absolutely, they requested the tennis courts. I think they requested the Hickory Ridge track. So did they request it? Yes, but it wasn't high enough up on the priority list to be funded.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is, are we jumping ahead of something else that was, that they asked for?
Rodney and I both had a conversation, if it's okay, I didn't mean to interrupt. Rodney and I had a conversation with Dr. Kapigee. You may want to elaborate on that, Rodney.
Yeah, so, part of the Thursday workshop, Dr. Kapigee has requested to share with you an alternative funding scenario. So we obviously recommended $43 million worth of projects based on the priorities that the school system provided, plus our judgment about what should be the priority. And as you know, we, for years, have neglected deferred maintenance, and we felt like that was important to get covered within the funding here. So what he is proposing, or will propose to you on Thursday, is to defer one of their HVAC replacements, which is a $9 million project. In lieu of that, to fund turf fields at Hickory Ridge High School, the tennis court replacements, and a couple of parking and drive replacements. So they will bring that to you on Thursday, and obviously, it'll be your call on whether you want to proceed with that.
So, it may be addressed in the budget.
So if we'll leave it off, I can always add it at the beginning of the meeting. So if, we'll leave it off for now and see what they say and.
I think there needs to be some clarification, because I think we have all received some emails and phone calls about this process. And, you know, I've heard this time and time again, well, the school system has requested that from the county, and that may be right, but, and formally, I guess formally, they have requested it, but on this list of requests, you know, as Commissioner Wortman said, you know, we get down to item seven, and the money that we have budgeted were out at that point. So how many items would you say are on this list of requests that they send us? I mean, I know it's hundreds of millions.
Yeah, they send us, that's part of the confusion with the way they submit their budget. So they submit what they call their top 36, which is prioritized 1 through 36. This budget would fund 29 of those 36. They also then have their, they call it their square, that's their main, primary capital improvement projects. That's what Commissioner Wortman is talking about, where they had things like the Arbrown McAllister, turning that into Mary Frances Wall. The tennis courts were on there, auditoriums were on there. We did not get that far down that list.
Right. So how many items would you say are on that list?
It's 12 on that list.
So 12, so 36 on?
Well, technically, we got through seven of them, but one of them we did not recommend, which is the Royal Arks High School addition.
Okay.
That was their number three.
And so now, all of these requests, what would be the dollar figure, or just round about? I know you can't give me exact, but just off the top of your head, like a?
I know their total capital request is 300 and something million.
Right, okay, so that's equivalent to our entire county budget.
County budget, yeah.
So it's not untrue whenever we get these phone calls from folks that say, that are upset because we're not funding a certain project, and they say, well, they have been directed by the school system and the school board to call us and say, well, they made that request. So it's not untrue that they didn't make the request, it's just, whenever you're requesting that amount that is equivalent to our budget, something is not going to get funded, and they have their priority list. And so if they put it way down on the priority list, well, yes, they did technically request it, but there was no way we could get to it on that list. So I feel like there has been some misinformation on that out there, and I just, I wanted to clarify how that really works in case anybody's watching and thinks that, you know, something has been completely requested, and as I said, you know, it's, there's a lot more, there's a lot more to it than.
Just for clarification on Royal Oaks, would you say they requested not to fund it, or we?
They requested that project. I think it was their third priority. We did not recommend it as part of this budget.
Will you be elaborating on that on Thursday? Why we wouldn't recommend it?
Again, it comes down to prioritizing existing facilities versus creating new facilities in the county.
Okay.
And we focused, this budget focused more on existing facilities that we've neglected for many years.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, Rodney's, I think he's defined or explained it very well in our conversation with Dr. Kapigee in the schools. They have, you know, they've got a list, and we have a list. What we're worried about, and what we're trying to do is that huge building deferred maintenance number. So, and the reason it's so big is because the items in there are so expensive. So if you pluck one or two out, those are 5, $10 million expenses that replace the heat and air units and that kind of thing. So if you take $5 million to replace an aging system, the school system could put a lot of tennis courts up, a lot of ball fields, and a lot of stuff for $5 million. So depending on which way you go, and there's going to be that conversation between you and the school board, too, is that, and where we're at is, okay, these need to get done, or they're going to continue to get pushed down, because they're always a big number. Every year, they're going to be a big number, and there's multiple one of those. But also, is if you don't do that system, that heat and air conditioning system, and you fund, and I'm not saying no tennis courts or ball fields or whatever, because I'm a big supporter of athletics, too. But if you take that, and all of a sudden, you pay it over here, and you didn't pay for that heat and air system, and it goes out in December, you don't have a choice. You've got to find $5 million or $8 million to replace that or repair it, because kids got to go to school, and they got to have heat in the wintertime and cooling the summer. So I think it's, there's no right or wrong, but this is where Rodney and I, as on your budget team, are trying to propose, we're trying to address some of those long-term deferred maintenance projects, and give some other money over here to repair and build new facilities. And it's just a fine line, and it's going to come down between, you know, the two boards hashing that out and deciding which one you think is the higher priority, and so.
I think it goes back to a lot of discussions we've had in the back, in the past, is how clear is your crystal ball? And if your crystal ball were clear enough that you could accurately predict when that HVAC system is going to kick the bucket in the middle of the year, and we're going to have 1,500 kids in a school building without any heat in it? And in addition to the fact that we've got to come up with the money to pay for it, the conversations that I've heard over the last 18 to 24 months are, it takes 18 to 24 months in some cases to get those systems delivered because of supply chain issues. I hope that maybe has improved, but, you know, I think if we get ourselves in that kind of a jam, that's a big gamble to take. If a system goes out and we don't, and then we say, oh, well, you're just going to have to wear more sweaters for 24 months until we can get a new system in, I don't think that's going to be very well received by students or parents. So, yeah, so I'd be anxious to hear that discussion on Thursday. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay, next item, 5.3, Solicitation Ordinance, and this is an item brought up by Commissioner Strang, so I will turn the floor over to her.
Sure. This is actually a non-solicitation ordinance, for clarification. So this was brought to me after several complaints in the unincorporated areas, primarily in the Harrisburg area, where people were coming up soliciting all hours of the day and night. One neighborhood was particularly concerned because whomever was coming to their door obviously didn't have the required badge, they weren't registered, and they knew the resident by name. So, hello, Mrs. so-and-so, hello, Mr. so-and-so, I'm here about this. So there's some concern, and it's been a growing problem, I would say predominantly in the unincorporated areas of Harrisburg. I believe Harrisburg, Evan, can you correct me if I'm wrong, does have a non-solicitation ordinance? Yeah, most of the municipalities do, so this would just cover the unincorporated areas. Most of the problems are in the Harrisburg area, but there are some pockets going out towards Midland, some of the newer subdivisions that are having issues with that. And normally, within the municipalities, you have to register your business with the city. You would have to have a badge saying that you're registered, you have to have the certificate, there's a process to it. That is a very cumbersome process. After discussions with the Sheriff's Department, they just would rather do no solicitation, period, because then it gets into a battle of, well, who's going to submit, who's going to give them permit here? They're only permitted here, but not here. So this, you know, the person that legitimately is going out asking you if you want a new roof or something, has got to go to multiple locations to get a permit, to be legal. So with this proposal, and going back and forth with the Sheriff's Department, it could, it would be enforceable, but the homeowner or neighborhood could post on there, if I'm understanding this right, no solicitation or no door-to-door sales. And that would hopefully alleviate some of those issues. It would also alleviate, you know, or give the homeowner the opportunity to call the Sheriff's Department, and the sheriff can actually now do something. Right now, their hands are tied, they can't really help. You know, so if you've got repeat offenders coming to your door, asking you whatever it might be, and some of the folks coming door-to-door have been known to be aggressive, very pushy, and, you know, scared the dickens out of one elderly woman in an unincorporated area, and that there's nothing the Sheriff's Department can do because there's no ordinance to enforce any action. And in that case, the elderly woman had a vehicle description, which direction they went, very good information, but the sheriff couldn't do anything, and they just said, get out of here, don't go back, pretty much. So this would generally, I mean, Girl Scout cookies, I don't think anybody's going to call the Sheriff's Department, but these are for some of the more egregious, not, you know, solicitation, whether it's vacuum cleaners, spectrum, roof, tree trimmers, some of them have become, there's other ones that are coming out there. So this would eliminate any solicitation in those areas, provided they have a no solicitation or no door-to-door sales, notification either on their home or at the beginning of their neighborhood. I know there are some neighborhoods in Kannapolis that I have seen that as soon as you enter the neighborhood, there's a sign there that says, "No solicitation of any kind." And that covers them under the city of Kannapolis's city ordinance. So what I was, you know, do we need to have a public hearing regarding this before moving forward? I know it's on our, is it on our agenda? But do we need to have a public hearing, and so that I can get the resolution in full resolution form, because all I've got is, I don't have the whole legal language here, I've just got the draft of it, but that was in a nuts and bolts of what the reasoning behind that was and what's included in it. And Evan, if you want to speak a little bit more to it, that's fine.
Yeah, I would assume that we would have to produce an ordinance.
Right.
Before there would be a need for a public hearing, or?
Yeah, we don't need to have a public hearing on an ordinance itself. You guys could pass the ordinance. So it's really just tonight, I think Commissioner Strang, and to some extent, myself, is looking for input on kind of the pleasure of the board to draft this in final ordinance form.
And so, if I understand you correctly, this would only be applicable if somebody posted a sign on their house.
House or the beginning of their neighborhood.
Or the neighborhood.
And if you say the beginning of the neighborhood, then that's going to be a, you know, I would be interested to hear what the sheriff had to say about that, because I would think that's going to be a bit of a challenge, because we just spent about six months revising an ordinance that said a neigh, so many feet of a neighborhood, and nobody could define exactly the neighborhood. So I would have that concern.
I understand what you're saying. Neighborhoods, they're usually homeowner association-driven, you know, the neighborhoods, you know, most of them, unless you're, but a lot of the ones that are homeowner, have owner associations, they will provide a sign at the beginning of each entrance, and it's specifically for solicitation, not anything else. I've seen it in Kannapolis in several neighborhoods, and Kannapolis is unable to enforce it.
I'm trying to think how many of those neighborhoods that fit that description would be in unincorporated areas of the county.
There are some, and I mean, like, for example, there's portions going towards, I believe, Midland. I think one of those neighborhoods might go outside of the town of Midland limits, and it's going to be in an unenc, in an unincorporated area, if I'm not mistaken, but don't hold me to that, I'd have to look back. But as we're growing, you know, we're going to have more solicitation, and there's also, you know, a lot of people are, you know, the way the world is going today, I guess there's, people are very fearful, and this alleviates some stress and some, you know, gives them some sense of security, that if they put a no solicitation sign on their front door and somebody walks up, they don't even have to answer the door, they can just call the Sheriff's Department.
Other questions or comments?
I have no problem with us passing an ordinance of this nature, you know, and I understand what you're saying as far as a neighborhood defining that, but if we have this on the books, it will probably deter a number of prospective solicitors, or if someone, I would imagine some of these neighborhoods, the larger neighborhoods that would be in the unincorporated, that's probably an easier target for solicitors to go into an area that is, you know, condensed housing. So, you know, I don't think it would hurt for us to pass something of this nature. Of course, if you're not in a neighborhood, and you are adamant about not having people soliciting to you, then you put a sign, I guess, by your door. I would imagine, is that, does it have to be in there? I guess that would be determined by the ordinance, but I would imagine being on their door or in their yard would be.
So, I looked at a lot of ordinances from a lot of different jurisdictions and tried to come up with, the concern was not coming up with a permitting system. In fact, there's been some discussion on the Attorney's Service about some jurisdictions that do this, and what kind of notice you do. So, yes, the way I tried to draft it was just using generic terms, like on your premises. So it can be at the foot of the driveway, or now, to Commissioner Morris's perspective, you could theoretically have somebody who's going to want to fight, well, what does premises mean? But using general terms, residential subdivision, shopping center building, that kind of thing, have it apply to, you know, if it's on-site, then that should be enough notice. And again, it's kind of a deterrent.
Okay. I think that would be better than a permitting.
Yeah.
You know, and like I said, this just general ordinance would probably deter some, and if, you know, somebody steps on, or somebody has a no soliciting, you know, sign on their door, but the person, the solicitor comes walking down their driveway, I mean, I'm not sure how aggressive the solicitor then would become if they say, hey, you know, not, you know, no soliciting here. I mean, I don't know that a company would want to be involved in having aggressive people soliciting their product, but it may happen. But I think this would alleviate some of the issues. I've heard several complaints as well.
Evan, have you talked to the sheriff, and have you talked to the district attorney's office about?
I have not talked to the district attorney's office. I've talked to the sheriff's office some. I know they had some concerns with enforcement on the permitting system. The, we, Commissioner Strang and I presented kind of the draft ordinance to them, and they did not have a lot of concerns about this. I think there are. did not have a lot of concerns about this. I think there are going to be some concerns with enforcement, just to the example she gave, you know, how, how fast are they going to get out there, and is that, are you going to know, know, you know, who the company worked for, if it's the middle of the night, that kind of thing, and be able to, to track down the solicitor. But I think that the concern from the Sheriff's Office now is that there's just nothing, and so there's not really anything they can do because it's not, unless it's a trespass, which it may not be, there, there wasn't much they could do.
Yeah. I think, for the board's purpose too, I think maybe it'd be wise for us to talk with the District Attorney's Office as well, just to see, is this a criminal trespassing? Is this, I don't...
It's, it would be a misdemeanor under the, the ordinance code, but I know there's been a push to decriminalize that, and there's some, there's some legislation a few years ago on what can be criminalized and what cannot be criminalized. So I would need to run that to the ground too.
We can have those conversations, so when you guys get ready to hear. I think it was very valuable in the, on the gun ordinance as well, to have the input of both the sheriff and the DA's offices. If somebody does violate the ordinance that we put in place, what, what can they do?
Yeah.
At this point, yeah.
I have a lot of, lot of concerns. I mean, perhaps I don't know the exact definition of solicitation, but for example, political campaigns frequently talk about knocking on doors and talking to people. Well, I for one appreciate it when a political candidate comes and knocks on my door, because I want to hear what they've got to say. I want to know what they stand for. I want the opportunity to ask them questions. So does this prohibit that?
We, it would not. We could define it to be even more specific than it is. The way I've got it now is, is to, there's kind of a preamble that says what the intent is, that it, and it doesn't go as far as to define, but I have seen some that do define it, so we could do that to clear that up.
Yeah.
But it's talking about the examples I've used, and where this actually falls, just so the board knows, is there is actually kind of an obscure provision in, in Chapter 153 that allows you guys to regulate begging and panhandling. It's an old statute, but it's, it's talking more about soliciting for money, not for that kind of thing, not for, not for canvassing, and, and we obviously wouldn't be talking about like religious groups and things like that either.
But I, but I think that, and I give as an example, and I try not to go on next door very often, but they send me millions of emails, and I see people that say, a, a person that I did not recognize came to my front door and knocked today, and I immediately called the police. And I was thinking, really? You've called the police just because you don't recognize somebody that's at your door? That, I see that quite a bit. I think at, at my own home, I think it was, it was, it might have been Friday or over the, I don't know, a young man came to my door at about 8:30 in the evening, about this same time, which I thought was approaching a little late. And, and he was, he appeared to be college age. I just assumed maybe that was a summer job for him, but anyway, he was trying to sell me exterminating services. And I didn't think anything about it, but if, if the city has an ordinance against solicitation, then perhaps he was breaking the law. I don't know.
Yeah, Concord does. So he could, he could, he very well may have been.
He could, he could have had a permit if the city-
Yeah.
-if the city allows that.
They do have a permit. I believe Concord has a permitting system, if I remember correctly.
They do.
I don't know. I mean, I didn't feel like he was threatening in any way. He might have been a little bit annoying, but I mean, I'm sure, there's a lot of people say the same of me.
I don't like people coming to my door and ringing my doorbell.
Well, I do. I'm a talker. I like to talk to them.
I think the preference of this is when I was getting phone calls, it's more of a safety issues for our citizens. Some of these are folks, and if you had a permit, you're probably not going to be very aggressive, but when you have somebody trying to force their way in or looking over you to kind of see what kind of goods you have in your home-
Right.
-that's a little scary. And I've had a few calls about that. Those are more predominantly in the unincorporated area of Harrisburg, and that's the reason that I brought this forth. You know, people are getting a little bit more brazen these days. Things are more difficult financially to come by for some people, and that the last thing I want to do is put one of our citizens at, in harm's way because they answered the door to tell, you know, no, I don't want to buy your vacuum cleaner, but they watch your house and you pull away, and then all of a sudden, the next day, your home is broken into and all your valuables that that person saw are gone. So it's more for the safety of our citizens, really. You know, that, that little elderly lady was pretty shaken up when I spoke to her.
So I guess it is, boils down to what is the pleasure of the board? Would you like to get some additional input, as suggested by the county manager, from the sheriff and the District Attorney's Office?
Yep.
And let them come back and speak to us and say, yes, I recommend this, I think it's a good thing, or no, or, or you need these adjustments. Is, am I seeing positive head nods?
Yeah. I can, I know preliminary discussions with the Sheriff's Department, they're in favor of it. I, I do feel that we need to run it by the District Attorney's Office, like we have in prior ones, to make sure we're not breaking any constitutional rights of the citizens. So I think, you know, between our county attorney here and myself, we can probably get that taken care of.
Do you have something else?
I was just going to say, I'm in favor of moving forward. Now, certainly, I think, you know, we could have input from the District Attorney, and if there's any additional input from the sheriff, but I'm certainly in favor of moving forward with this.
If you could pursue that, Evan-
Yeah.
And then check back with us when it's appropriate to put it on the agenda or have that discussion. Everybody okay with that? Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, we move to item 5.4, budget discussion, and Roche is going to lead us in that one.
Good evening again. About three weeks ago, County Manager Downs presented the recommended budget, and we wanted to give the board an opportunity to discuss the recommended budget and provide us feedback. We do have a budget workshop coming up on Thursday, and we have some agenda items already for that. We have Fire District tax increases, that's going to be on the agenda. We had four fire districts requesting a tax increase. And then we also have the Cabarrus County Schools. They're going to talk about their funding categories, and then also what Rodney discussed earlier, the capital recommendations. And then, since then, we've added that Health Institute item also on there, where you have questions on that. So we wanted to basically give you an opportunity to kind of discuss the budget, provide us feedback, and also provide us an opportunity to field any questions you want us to address at the Thursday workshop.
Commissioners, feedback for Roche.
I don't know if it's budget related, or, well, it is budget related. So the Cabarrus County Arena, I know Rodney's been working on alternate ways to run that through different vendors and such. We haven't received an update, but we've got a funding item on here. So I mean, if we could get an item, like an update Rodney on, on where we're going with operations at the fairground, whether we stay with the current vendor or not, but I just see, you know, we do have that funded. And then there's another item, and I can't think of it off the top of my head. I may have to email you on it.
Their contract goes to next year.
Yeah.
The existing agreement goes into 2025.
Oh, five, okay. I thought it was next year.
So you will hear from the two potential providers at your July 10th meeting.
Okay.
They'll both present their proposals. One is the incumbent provider, and then one is an additional provider that wants to focus the facility on youth sports. And then we'll bring it back to you in August for final discussion and hopefully a decision on how you want to proceed, because obviously if we are switching vendors, we're going to need plenty of lead time to work on a transition plan.
None of that would impact the current fiscal year 24 budget?
I'm not sure what project you're referencing. So we have, for the most part, with arena projects, we have held off on quite a few of those, just to await this pending final decision, unless they are projects that are sustainable, regardless of provider.
I don't think it was the, the project itself. I think it was just the amount budgeted.
Yeah. Yeah, and that won't change because the, the-
Would the vendor change if we decided to go that route?
We won't be able to change, unless we negotiate a buyout, we will have to be with-
Okay.
-the current provider through 2025.
Okay. I thought it was 2024, so that, thank you for that clarification. There's something else, but I can't find the page, but I'll email you on that.
Have we looked at bringing that in-house?
We are going to run those numbers. We don't think they're going to be favorable because of some of the benefits, especially around retirement, that we have to provide that the private companies don't. Yeah.
First of all, we've got to look at ourselves, and it wasn't too successful. Well, it didn't, we didn't have professionals on staff that were able to do that. That's a, that's a unique business. But we haven't reconsidered to bring it in-house. It's not, we have other options.
The arena is page 69. But I did want to ask, while we're on that topic, I wanted to ask, I was under the impression that the arena was losing money each year, so here it just shows a break even, if I'm reading it correctly.
So what you're looking at on page 69 is the arena fund-
Right.
-and that is subsidized by the general fund. So the reason it has to, because it's an individual fund, it has to be balanced. It is being balanced off of a, I think, north of $1 million contribution from the general fund.
So now where is that reflected for the other funding?
It shows up in the other financing sources revenue.
Okay.
That 1.4 million-
Subsidy for the-
Is subsidy of-
What the arena is losing every, well, for what we're planning for 23, 24 budget, but-
Correct.
2021, 2022, the arena, we subsidized the arena 1, 1,591,306 dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
You mentioned fire district tax increases. Are there additional ones that we have not previously discussed?
Just the ones you've heard from the four.
The ones we've already talked about, okay.
There were four of them.
Right. Okay, other questions or comments on the budget? I think this, this is the appropriate time to do that, if there's anything in the budget. If there were, if there were a reason that anybody wanted to vote against the budget, this would be the time to bring those issues up so that they can be addressed prior to our regular meeting, when a vote would come up.
And real quick, before I forget, on the Commissioner Meesmer's question from earlier, for the longevity pay, 150,000 or more, there are seven employees that are above that salary. The total of that seven, six would be eligible, six of those seven, and the total cost for those six would be $9,500.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other budget questions, comments, input?
I've got a question. So I wanted to ask you about, you know, we had had talk and actually a vote last month about the ACN building, the new human services building. So from what I understood during that conversation is that that debt was going to be put into next, the next budget, 24, 25. Was, was I incorrect in that?
So it is included as part of the recommendation of the FY24 budget?
Right.
It is possible we won't go to the market until July of 2024, which would be fiscal 25.
Okay, so that's why I was confused, because I, from our discussion at that meeting is that it would be in the next budget cycle, but I've been seeing it throughout this budget.
Correct. And it's possible, the window for going to the market is take anywhere from March to July of next year.
And so it's budgeted at 60, 60 million in this-
Correct.
-which we clearly would not need based upon what we had discussed at the last meeting for purchase price.
So that's a comment, so that's a combination of the purchase price and potential renovations, which we have to do due diligence over the next six months to determine what, if any, renovations are needed or major system replacements. So if we have to replace a roof or an HVAC, those types of things.
Okay. Got it. Good. I didn't see that, I didn't see that mentioned in there, so that's the reason I asked about it. And then, let's see here, the sales, sales tax revenue, I see budgeted 75 million for the projected sales tax. Is that correct for, or a little over 75 million?
I believe that is across all funds.
Yeah, we'll just round it to 75. Now, that is roughly $9 million from, well, I guess, 9 million from two budgets. Now, so what happens if that number comes in less than 75 million? I know we have had extensive sales tax revenues, far more than what has, you know, even been thought about over the years, but what happens if that number comes in, say, $5 million short?
We would have to offset it by reduced expenses or increased revenues in other accounts.
Okay.
That number is conservative.
The 75 million is conservative.
Is conservative. It is not budgeting what we will collect in the current year. So we, we expect to collect, and Jim, I don't know if you have that number, but we expect to collect more than that in the current year.
More than 75 million in the current year? So then last year, the adopted was 67 million. So what's going to happen to that additional funds? We'll say it's $10 million. If last year, the adoptive was 67 million, the plan for next budget is 75, and you say that this year, we're going to collect more than that? So where would that additional 10 million fall in our budget, just in the general fund, just?
The additional, in the current year, the additional revenues over what we budget-
Right.
-will fall to fund balance at the end of the year.
And then, and then what, that money will be?
Per the policy, those will roll to the community investment fund.
Okay. All right.
And that's true with every budget surplus-
Correct.
-at the end of the year. In years past, that was a discretionary item that previous boards-
Unless appropriated, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, arbitrarily appropriated, but this new, this policy directs it-
Right.
-for those larger projects that would be funded.
Okay. And then on page 53, I had a question. At the top, it says contributions to other funds and activities. I was curious about what that is.
At the top.
The top of page 53, it's the third line down. I had the same question.
So those are-
Okay, yeah, go.
Those are amounts going out of the general fund to another account. So for example, the general fund contributes 40 million to the community investment fund, and so we have to account for all of those transactions. The million four that we talked about for the arena-
Right.
-that's a, that's showing up in this amount as well.
Okay.
Rodney, is there a way, because it's such a large number, to give us a line item of what, all that is?
Yep. Right there now.
And then on page 55, curious about, says sales and services, for, under the self-insured fund. Could you explain that to me? Sales and services, 2023, well, the self-insured fund, seven, it was 17 million, and then fluctuated down to 400,000.
Let's look at these lines. What shows up in those revenue lines?
It's the general fund. So that would be like our, I believe that would be like our ambulance, where we charge for ambulance fees and all that. of that would be in the general fund.
Okay, and that's under the sales, that's the, under the sales and services?
Yes.
Okay. So I, what was it, earlier the ambulance revenue, I believe, was sixteen point five million?
I don't think it's that much.
Okay, I thought that's what we had, whenever Jim had presented earlier, I thought I had read that in our agenda item, but I don't know. I can go back and look at that.
I did find the one item that I was looking for, legal department. I know we had some discussions regarding bringing some of those services in-house. Have we done any more with that, or where do we stand with that as a cost-cutting measure?
We are currently exploring that for human services in particular, and that's something that would likely come to the board in the future. Because of the reimbursements that they get at a state and federal level for those services, the cost savings will, would be minimal, probably in the neighborhood of maybe a hundred thousand dollars, but there could be other benefits to bringing that in-house in terms of accessibility. And so we are exploring that, but it's not part of the recommended budget. So this continues status quo.
Alright, I just got a couple more. And then under, on page seventy-six, on the position summary, just, just out of curiosity, I see board of commissioners. It was eight positions in twenty-two and then three positions in twenty-four. Is that just moving a category around? Somebody?
Yeah, I'd have to dig into that. So that's, the likelihood is those are just positions that move to the.
I think it's just the three full-time positions and then we have the board.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-two adopted was eight positions and then recommended for twenty-four, there's only three, which I know that we're not considered full-time, but.
Yeah.
I just wondered what.
Yeah, we'd have to get an answer to that one.
Okay, just curious. And then I guess under the county management, there was seventeen adopted in twenty-two, and then it looks like maybe those are broken out?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's breaking out the department to make it a little clearer on functions.
On what is going on, okay. And then I'm assuming that must be the same in the next category below under sheriff.
Correct.
Looks like some of those broke out, okay. And then I wanted to ask, under the five-year financial plan on page eighty-one, I was a little confused by, there's the twenty, or, you know, the twenty-four recommended. It seems like from the numbers at the very beginning, those numbers don't match. And I, and I know there's probably a reason, but I just wanted to know.
This is just the general fund.
Okay.
In the five-year plan.
So, because I mean, like, the property tax numbers don't match with.
If you were to look at the general fund.
Okay.
Under the fund summaries.
Uh-huh.
The property tax from there should match what's here.
So it's the, it does not include the property tax that's going to the fire districts?
Okay, alright, okay.
So this will match what you see on page sixty-five?
Yes, okay. I see that it matches there, okay. I was curious because on, at the very beginning, it didn't match, so that's, I understand.
I think the first part of it is doing all funds, and then we go into the specific general fund, and the five-year plan covers just the general fund because it's the largest one.
Alright, answer your question about human services. And then I had a question on page ninety-six, under the capital improvement plan, under land acquisition. And there was one for four million, and it doesn't say what that is for.
So that is a generic placeholder for land acquisition that may be needed in the coming year.
Okay.
So we've had multiple discussions about potential sites for Harrisburg Library, an active living center, school sites that always come up.
Okay, so it could go for anything.
And we'd have to bring that back to the board for.
I was just, because all the other ones are project-related, and that one just, it didn't have, it didn't say, so. And that's it. That's all the questions I have. Just some clarification on some things, numbers.
Okay, other questions? All right, if, if there are no other questions, thank you, gentlemen. I'm sure we'll talk more on Thursday. And we will move to item five point five from infrastructure and asset management, Cabarrus County parking deck reserves spaces discussion, and Kyle Billerfer will lead us in that discussion.
Could you scroll to that? So wanted to just give the board an update. Obviously, Novi Flats is opening up. That's one of the, the three different catalyst projects downtown. And as you know, we have an agreement via the city of Concord with them for providing spaces. And one of the ways that that reads is three hundred spaces reserved for any of the catalyst project groups. I assume that means any of the Novi Rise flats and whatever the other one is, to be able to park at the deck. So three hundred spaces, Monday through Friday, five PM to eight AM, and then twenty-four seven on Saturday and Sunday. And to provide those spaces, we obviously have to put some sort of identification on there. So this spreadsheet and those different, excuse me, different layouts show what we're proposing to mark those actual spots with. And I apologize for the colors. The contractors come back to me and let me know that that blue is not going to work, so it's going to end up being a black background with yellow writing. And they, the Novi Flats folks, the LMG group has asked me to take away the word flats and just keep it Novi residents, so it's for everybody. But we'll be putting those on the fifth, fourth, and third level of the five-level parking deck. I just want to make sure everyone is clear with that. And also, Todd Shanley and I have looked into different systems that would keep counts of how many people are in the deck and would keep the parking arms down when there was only three hundred spaces left. And there's a certain issue with doing that because you could be driving past the parking deck as a public person, and you would see a bunch of open spaces, but the parking arm would be down. And that's simply because per the agreement, we have to provide three hundred reserved spots at all times, five through eight. So I just kind of wanted to get the board's input on that. I, I felt like you would want us to go with the, painting it on, on the parking spot and taking our chances that way versus just keeping those arms down, starting at five o'clock if there's no more than three hundred spaces in there.
And then that means we would have to provide some sort of device for each of those residents to get that arm to come up to use those three hundred empty parking spaces, right?
That is correct.
I've used that parking deck frequently after hours and occasionally on weekends, particularly if I'm doing something downtown Concord, or if there's a performance at the Davis Theater and the Historic Courthouse. There has never been an incident that I have run into since the parking deck has been open that I could not get a parking place on the ground floor. So I would assume that those above that probably are empty. And now, you know, a lot of them have been restricted because of the construction for the past couple of years. It feels like a couple of years, maybe it hasn't been quite that long, but.
No, it actually has.
Okay. So, I mean, I think to display these signs, you're talking about at the entrance to these levels?
Oh, no, I'm talking on three hundred parking spaces.
Painting them on the space?
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that's overkill. I think a sign leading to those levels you're talking about, and then if we experience a problem, then, then we address it. But yeah, to, that, that, that's my feedback.
I have a question regarding that and concerning these. So in the, I guess, the parking lease agreement on page two, subsection A, of the three hundred spaces, it says here catalyst project, okay, of the three hundred spaces, one hundred and thirty-two will be leased by the city from the city's allocation, and then, and one hundred and sixty-eight will be leased directly from the county. So I'll, just so I'm understanding, because I, the way I was reading it this way is all three hundred are for Novi, but if we're leasing one hundred and sixty-eight spots, am I reading this right?
We own the building, so we're, we're not, you're saying we're leasing to them. So it's important to understand how the project was funded. The city put in three million dollars to the construction of that project to get those hundred and thirty-two spaces.
Okay, I'm reading it backwards. So we provided one sixty-eight, they provided one, whatever the difference, one thirty-two?
Thirty-two, that's correct.
Gotcha, okay.
So they, the city gave up all their spaces.
Gotcha. Now, the Novi folks that live there, I see some fees in here and such like that. If we are going to have to provide them a transponder, when I worked in Uptown Charlotte, I was responsible for renting my own transponder, and I was responsible for it. Are we looking at doing something like that for those residents in the event the arm is down and they can't get in because technically the parking deck is full?
Well, you're asking, you, you brought up paying, so there's, there's a whole different set of rules. What happens if you, if the board decides to start charging for parking there? Is basically you have to give what I would call probably rate discounts to all of the, the catalyst or the Novi folks that are using it. We're not charging right now at all.
Right.
So the answer is, is yes, if we put that parking arm down, we would be responsible for providing a swipe card to three hundred folks. That's accurate.
Okay.
At our cost.
I was gonna say, can we charge the, because if they lose it and they come back to us somewhere out another, you know, if people lose them, or normally when I was in Charlotte, for all the buildings that I parked in, my transponder was my responsibility. If I lost it, I had to go fork over another forty or fifty dollars to get a new one.
The way the agreement reads is we have to provide the access. It doesn't go into depth with explaining who loses it.
I think that makes perfect sense that, that per the ordinance or per the agreement, we give them one, and if they lose it, then they replace it.
There should be a fee. I mean, you know.
But as of right now, the parking arm is not going to be down, I think. Is that correct?
Correct. We have no plans of, of lowering it at this point. I'm just getting some, some ideas from the board.
Yeah, and they have visitors and then.
The, the LMG group very much.
Streetscape opens and there'll be lines to get in the parking garage.
Yeah, your, your biggest issue would be on your celebration events. And we've asked the LMG group, who obviously has a very strong relationship with the city of Concord, to talk to them about those events, because obviously those are city, usually city-sponsored events. They're not typically county-sponsored events. We might be a, a partner in it, but we've asked them to have those conversations because I felt that would be when the three hundred spots would in fact be an issue. And that was my concern is that we're not letting the public who's going there to, for a parade or for, for a tree lighting to park there because we are required per the agreement to provide three hundred reserved spaces for them, starting at five PM. So if you don't want those painted, because I feel that the, the groups that Mr. Shanley and I have been speaking to that work for the groups that, that run the catalyst projects or the Novi projects, if you don't want those painted, and I'm only, I'm thinking about exactly what you said, is we wait till it's an issue. So tell me what you consider an issue, because the, the agreement is very vague at that. We never committed to, we're towing somebody who's parked there and shouldn't be. You understand, on the, the fifth floor of the deck, the top level, and I know you all don't spend lots of time there after hours, and I'm glad, but there's all sorts of events that take place. Football events, parties, date night, I mean, really, folks and going and getting.
On the top of the parking garage.
Absolutely. Folks that go out and get dinner or takeout and then go up there and literally put a blanket out and just, I mean, watch the sunset.
Oh, it's a beautiful view up there. It truly is.
And this.
Participate.
I've not been invited to any of the parties, but I'd like to be.
This, this happens all the time. So, and that's one of the primary areas that we're telling them to park. So I kind of feel like we are going to hear something, and without a numbering system, without a signage system, you know, I, I can't, I can't note as you drive past a column that says every parking space past this is reserved. I can't, I, I can't make that happen. So I am looking for some guidance.
If you put a sign in each parking space, painted on the pavement, then I'm assuming then every car that parks in that parking place has to have some sort of sticker or some.
Hangs, it's a placard that hangs. They've already actually shared their design with us.
Yeah.
And while I'm, I'm not using their logo on the, the ground painting, they specifically have like a logo that they know if people are going to try to make copies of it. They've actually already shared that with us.
Right.
So now, who will enforce this? I'm assuming the fifth floors where these events are taking place. Is that correct?
Spreadsheet shows fifth, fourth, and third.
Right, but that's where these parties and stuff are taking place, after hour events.
The majority of them that I've seen on the.
So that will be reserved for, for the residents of this building. Now, who is going to enforce this?
Also very interesting because the agreement doesn't go into that.
I mean, because I'm assuming if somebody called the police, and it would be city would come out, but the county owns.
City doesn't step, city does not come out for calls like that on our properties.
Okay.
So we're going to ask the sheriff's department to, to come out and monitor the parking spaces in the parking deck and the Girl Scouts knocking on people's doors, selling cookies as well?
Not to monitor, but I think that what we'll end up getting is, I think, LMG, again, who's the owner-operator, will get calls that says, we had four people parking in these spots this past weekend, and I couldn't, those are, those are reserved spots. They'll probably send that to me, and because I'll have the spots numbered, I'll try to use the camera system the best that I can to identify who that is and make sure that they're not employees or courthouse employees, and it'll keep going and going. But eventually, if they fill up in all of the locations, because keep in mind, only Novi flats is going online. So that's a drop in the bucket. I don't know, eighty, seventy or eighty units, okay? We're not going to have a problem, whether I paint or don't paint, we're not going to have a problem for a while, except during these downtown events. We get to those other catalyst projects opening up, and you're, we are going to have to do something to honor that agreement.
Right.
So we're, we're going there one way or the other. And my thought was, do it now so that everybody over the next year, twelve months, sixteen months, maybe on some of those constructions, actually, they're pretty close on a couple of those, sees those, asks questions, complains, offers comments, and then when those other ones go online and there really is, or are three hundred people in there, that we've kind of set that tone. You know, I think hindsight, there'd be some changes to the agreement. You know, five PM is pretty tough because not everybody leaves work at five PM. And some people come to work earlier than eight AM.
When does this agreement expire, or is it just an agreement that was created in?
Ten, ten years, and then I think we can, we have to renegotiate some things in terms of, yeah.
Because each of those spaces are, were.
Fifty, fifty years?
Fifty years? And so each of these spaces, we're only getting thirty-five dollars. Is that correct? From the residents?
If we start charging, yes. They have a fee structure built in. That would be less than anything else we could charge.
Thirty-five dollars a space, and would that be for the fifty years, or is it, does it escalate at that?
I'd have to look through the lease. I think it has some, some general provisions in there about, but yes, the answer is, with the agreement that the board of commissioners entered with, with that, is that, that provides that catalyst project a break on what we would be, what we'd be charging for parking.
Because I mean, we, we spent county taxed, we spent county taxpayer funds to build this parking garage, and then now two apartment complexes are going to basically, three apartment complexes are going to own half of the spaces in that building. I mean, in that parking structure, I, I just can't, I can't fathom how that agreement came about. Sounds like, you know, we, that was a bad deal for the Cabarrus County taxpayers. Thirty-five dollars seems a pretty good deal for each space, but.
Thirty-five dollars per what?
Space.
Per month, per year?
I think it's per month. It's per month. You probably voted on this contract, so.
I did, yes, absolutely.
It was a bad deal.
That was part of our agreement as part of the redevelopment of downtown Concord.
That cost the county taxpayers a lot of money. We essentially built a parking garage for three private businesses.
No, we essentially built a parking garage that from eight AM until five PM every day supplies parking spaces. day supplies parking spaces for our courthouse employees...
Which was needed, exactly.
...and our courthouse customers, and then we are producing a potential additional revenue source when that parking deck would be empty, when those people are not working in our courthouse after five P.M. every day.
Well, potentially, but I don't see that happening, so...
Well, you, if you, well, I tell you what you do, when we leave here...
I agree that it was needed for the courthouse staff and people that's going to the courthouse.
When we leave here tonight, I would challenge you to drive over to that parking deck, and count how many cars are in it right now.
Well, you know, you know all that's going to change in a couple of years, especially with the, with the downtown being, you know, fixed, more people moving into that area, anyway.
Yeah, if we had not done what we did to encourage the development that's happening downtown, it would not be changing.
I don't know about that, but I'll just say that, you know, I think the painting, I mean, I understand, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, if we get ahead of this issue, because, and get people used to, used to the process, then it will be a lot less headache than in the future, but...
And I do not disagree with that, I trust your judgment, if you think to go ahead, do it as you've provided and the samples of initially, get people used to it, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Just an alternative that I've seen, that when I've entered parking decks in various locations in the downtown Charlotte area, it's clearly labeled, like, label, the first floor is waller white, you know, on all the columns and everything else like that, it's very clearly labeled that anything above, you know, the green level is residential or whatever business it is, parking, and it is restricted, so I mean, that's an option, I'm just throwing it out there, when you walk, you know, when you drove in, you saw signs that said, you know, once you get into the green zone, or whatever color it was, you weren't allowed, and your tolling would be enforced, that may be an option, I don't know, rather than part, I'm just thinking of a different way than rather individually stamping each parking spot that seems time-consuming for you and staff.
It probably is going to have to both be done, because people just, I mean, in situations like that, people don't pay attention, there's probably going to have to be signs, stamped spaces, and then there's still probably going to be a problem, or somebody that don't care, has to go and park there anyway.
It'll be a challenge to provide both of what you're talking about, so signage is difficult on that facility because of how the building was built, and the pre-strand that's behind the concrete, which is why you see that we have to use very shallow when we drill into that. The other issue of doing it level by level would be exactly what you would want to do if your levels weren't laid out the way they were, and if we hadn't given three hundred spaces, which actually brings you halfway down the third level, so I don't have a column to start it on. But, yeah, exactly what you're talking about, like you remember when you get off, when you get on the elevator, you say, I'm on the green floor, you don't remember that it's level six or seven, you just say it's green, I would love to do that with the way it's laid out and the number of spaces, that's not an option, that's why I've ended up here with the spaces.
Okay. I like to paint, go ahead and I favor doing it sooner than later, like you said, go ahead, head it off before it comes to a problem.
Yes, sir.
Have we, have we given you what you need, or have we further clouded?
And then some, sir, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Oh, you're good?
Yeah, we'll carry forward.
You're good, we're good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move to item five point six, Emergency Equipment Warehouse and I T S Building Project Update, Michael Miller.
I wanted to give you an update on the progress over the last thirty days on the Emergency Equipment Warehouse and I T S Office Building, which is under construction right now on the corner of Cabarrus Avenue and Ramden Court, so I've got a couple notes here from Lyles Construction. Over the last thirty days, the roof has been completed on the building, the curb and gutter in the parking lot is ninety-five percent complete, the drywall has been hung and finished to ninety-five percent in the building, the storefront curtain wall has been completed, the fire department connection pressure test has been completed and passed inspection by the city's fire department, the B D A survey has been completed and passed, B D A stands for bidirectional amplifier. Some milestones over the next thirty days are that the generator pad will be completed, the primer and paint will be done on the inside of the building, and the acoustical ceiling grid will be installed. So I've got some pictures here, I can walk you through those, this is the front entrance of the I T S portion of the building, masonry's all complete there, this is the opposite, the opposite corner of the front side of the building, you can see the curb and gutters gone in the parking lot, that's a shot of the front parking lot there, standing on Ramden Court, so that's where the public will enter. That is the front entrance, kind of standing from the, in the same location I just told you about. Pretty much the same shot, but you can see the warehouse portion of the building off to the left side of the picture.
Make sure you're talking into the microphone.
Okay, sorry, this is the warehouse portion of the building on the backside, and that's the work going on on the dumpster enclosure I was telling you about. You can see here they're putting down the gravel base for the asphalt parking lots. That's just another shot of the gravel going down around the warehouse. As I said, the sheet rock's almost ninety-five percent complete inside, so that's what that is in the I T portion of the office. More of the same sheet rock work going on, same thing here, and this is an interior shot of the warehouse. And back outside, more office space, these are the developer collaboration offices. Back outside again, supervisors' offices. This is the main entrance, as you would walk into the building, that's what you're going to be seeing right there. So, any questions on any of that?
What's the estimated completion date on this?
September.
September, thank you.
That is September of two thousand twenty-three, right?
Yes, sir.
Never know on these...
Well, by the looks of it, it looks like September twenty-three.
We're getting close.
We're getting very close.
Okay, any other questions on this one, before Michael moves on to the next update? Okay, next, Emergency Medical Services Headquarters Update.
Okay, so same type of information here on this one, past thirty days, the permanent power's been turned on to the building, the floor and wall tile and restrooms has been installed, there's been an acoustical spray, applied to exposed ceilings and the roof, the roof decking of the fitness and scenario rooms, there's been some paving done along Union Cemetery Road, and this, for the next thirty days, we're going to have the HVAC equipment started up, and start to get the building acclimated for finishes, and we'll continue floor tile, also slight work on the outside of the building, so I can walk you through the pictures there too, there's about eighteen more of them, I think, that's the view from Union Cemetery Road, you can see the, the ambulance bay there in the center of the picture. This is the shot of that paving I was talking about on Union Cemetery Road. This is a shot of the front side of the building, will be the public entrance there in the center, that's the parking lot along Cabarrus Avenue. This is a view from the intersection of Cabarrus and Union Cemetery Roads. This is also looking further down Cabarrus Avenue, back towards the building, you can see more of the parking lot there. This is the backside of the building, so the other side of the ambulance bay there in the center. Another backside of the building shot, this will be the staff side, per se. That's one of the restrooms there, I was talking about, the wall tile and floor tiles Another, another shot of the backside of the building, they've got gravel down for getting ready to do some paving. This is the kitchen and dayroom space in the EMS part of the building. These are some offices. More tile work in the restrooms. This is actually EMS, the ambulance bay. That's another, another shot from outside of the building. This is a workroom, we'll have some cubicles in the center there, and then offices are in a perimeter. And that is the training room, it's a large space on the front corner of the building facing the intersection. This is a staff conference room. And there's some of the floor tile I was talking about that's getting installed right Any questions on the EMS Headquarters Building?
Completion date on that one?
September, September.
Same, same...
About the same time here. Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions for Michael? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is approval of the regular meeting agenda, at one point, we had added an item, and then we took it away, so I think everything remains the same. You know, I will point out, I've heard several discussions in recent months about slipping items through on the consent agenda, and so I will report that every single item that we've discussed tonight is on the consent agenda, and the only new business item is the adoption of the budget, which, do we advertise another public hearing on that? We certainly will have a public comment section, but no, we, this was the notice to public hearing, but we can still, we will still receive comments like we always do, yeah. So, does anybody have any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that motion passes. I regret to inform you that we do not have need of a closed session tonight, so you won't get to stay any longer, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, we had multiple motions.
Second.
And seconds, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, we stand adjourned. Thank you for all for hanging with us, both online and here in person.